Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the special meeting of the Almani Union High School District Board of Trustees. Today is Wednesday, February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Call this meeting to order at five oh two P M. Doctor Zuniga, if you will take roll call.
Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Member Ricardo Padilla.
Here.
Member Qui win.
Here.
Member Doctor Marita Galvez.
Present.
Member Doctor Luis Guzman.
Present.
Member Francisco Breones.
Present.
All present.
All members are present. Do want to note that we don't have the full cabinet tonight. Doctor Rivas had a family emergency and our legal counsel is not present with us at this time. This time, Doctor Zuniga, if you can read us into closed session.
Yes, thank you. First item is closed session pursuant to government section code. Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D two and E one potential litigation one matter and item B closed session pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven point six. The board will confer with labor negotiations and that would be with Almani Union High School District, EMUA and Almani High School District, which is the parking unit EMUA.
Thank you, Doctor Zuniga. Are there any comments for closed session items?
No public comments.
No public comment. So at this time, the board will recess into closed session. We will return at six o'clock or as close to that time as possible.
Just a couple of things, we have a lot of teams that have advanced to the playoffs. And I'm excited to inform you at least a couple of things, because the principals have informed us and updated us on their playoffs. What's interesting is one of our, two of our schools will be in the semifinals in basketball. They'll play against each other. So South Almani is, will be playing Rosemead at Rosemead High School on Friday for the CIF semifinals. So it's like their final four. Yes, this Friday. So if you are available at Rosemead High School, let us know. We can get you some tickets. It is a CIF event. If you have your CIF card, that should work if you do have your CIF cards. But if you plan on attending, let us know. We're hoping that the outcome is going to be difficult because we want to root for both teams. I want to wish both teams, you know, a good outcome and success. And I know that they've been working hard to get to this point. Very exciting. Also at South Almani, I think our young ladies for our soccer team are also in the quarterfinals too. And they will be also hosting a game on Saturday at South Almani High School. I believe the time is five now? Okay, so that'll be at five o'clock. What time is the Friday night game? I thought it was a seven? Seven o'clock game? At Settleback. At Settleback.
Friday.
That's also Friday.
And then the girls at South Almani High School are playing against Cornerstone Christian.
Cornerstone Christian, yeah. And I don't recall a time where we've had several teams just advance. And those are the benefits from the way CIF has competitive pairing now in CIF, where it gives even small schools or even the smallest enrolled schools like our school, like South Almani, a chance to be victorious. So wishing them all the best of luck. A couple of things that we also are working on, we are looking at ribbon cutting, which we don't have a date yet because it's still tentative. There is an issue with the fire alarm panel. We're trying to resolve for the family and community engagement center at South Almani High School. That is a former PDC. Our March meeting with our super PAC will discuss that. And we're looking forward to doing an event for our parents, but at the same time do a ribbon cutting celebration. It'll kind of integrate both of them. It is, it is part of their, you know, the reason why we're doing this. So I want to make sure that our parents are engaged in that, that actually festivity and ribbon cutting celebration too. And the last thing is that we also are working on a groundbreaking for the Rosemead Center renovation. And that most likely will happen in early April. But I don't have dates for you, but just keep those in mind. And as soon as I get some tentative dates, we'll give you, probably next Wednesday. Dr. Lynn and I are working on that as we speak. That's about it.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. Moving on to trustee Nguyen.
I would like to report it out, you know, during the last two weeks, I had, you know, we had the Lunar New Year celebration at the district office, the drive-through event. It's a wonderful event. A lot of parents, you know, participated, especially, you know, our Latino parents. And they embraced the difference, you know, the culture Lunar New Year, and they had a lot of fun, a lot of positive feedback. And another thing I want to report it out is last week, I, I had a meeting with the super, the new superintendent of Rosemead School District, Dr. Philip Agostino. And he wanted to see my view of his district and, you know, and, you know, and he would say he champion equity and champion data-driven result. So I gave him what I saw from my optics. He's a resident for forty-seven years and very involved in the community and in his school too. I say, you know, there's a lot of inequity in Rosemead School District, you know, with the previous superintendent. First of all, I told you, Musketao used to have a sign Olympia team, which is they are champion, you know, at the state level and they compete on national level. And in the fourth, fifth grade, you know, it disappeared. The reason it disappeared because all of them are Asian. So, you know, that's inequity right there. Another inequity is, you know, they used to have PCC teaching math on Saturday, Sunday, at the, you know, for, to enrich our Latino kid.
I would like to report it out, you know, during the, uh, last two weeks, uh, I had, you know, we had the Lunar New Year celebration at the district office, the drive-through event, it's a wonderful event, a lot of parents, you know, participated, especially, you know, our Latino parents, and they embraced the difference, you know, the culture Lunar New Year, and they had a lot of fun, a lot of positive feedback. And another thing I want to report it out is, last week, I, um, I had a meeting with the super, the new superintendent, uh, superintendent of Rosemead School District, Dr. Philip Agostino, and he wanted to see my view of his district, and you know, and, you know, and he say he champion equity and, and champion data-driven result. So, I gave him what I saw from my optics, he's a resident for forty-seven years, and very involved in the community and in his school too. I say, you know, there's a lot of inequity in Rosemead School District, you know, uh, with the previous superintendent. The, first of all, I told you, Muskatah used to have our, uh, sign Olympia, uh, team, which is, they, they are champion, you know, at the state level, and they compete on national level, and in the fourth, fifth grade, you know, it disappear. The reason disappear, because all of them are Asian. So, you know, that's the inequity right there. Another inequity is, you know, we, they used to have PCC teaching math on Saturday, Sunday, at the, you know, for, to enrich, uh, our Latino kid, they disappear too. So, you take, you know, equity doesn't mean that you take away from one group and give to another, here you take away everything, you don't put it back to, to the pot. And we go, we spent hours go over the data with the new superintendent, and I see, I show him the result, you know, of Latino and Asian, this been happening for years and years. I, I, I met with the previous superintendent, and, and, and Doc, I mean, Mr., Mr. Padilla also met with him also, on sunny Easter weekend, read, you know, promise made, but never kept. So, you know, he say, and you know, he's different, he gonna be data-driven, and you know, he relative new, so you know, let give him a chance to show how it work. And you know, I believe, I believe, you know, he very genuine, and you know, right after the meeting, he set, he schedule another meeting to follow up, so he would want to share his view, how to move his district forward. Because, you know, we have a community, it's part of our school, a failure to acknowledge that community is the biggest shortcoming, and we've been teaching our kids eight habit, leader and me, win-win, and synergize. We teach, but we don't practice. So, that's very important, you know, so, so he also invite me go to his study session tomorrow, but I don't think I can make it, but you know, I tried to make, you know, mostly event, he always invited me, so he want to show how he can move his district forward, and that's very important, and that's it, I want to cut out, you know, in five minutes.
Thank you, trustee Nguyen. Trustee Padilla?
Yeah, I just, uh, I really enjoyed the Lunar New Year celebration, and, uh, even though the federal government is getting rid of, you know, diversity, equity, and inclusion programs, um, I'm glad that in California, you know, we are the fourth largest economy in the world, and we have a lot of money power behind what we speak, and we continue to, uh, offer multicultural events such as the Lunar New Year. Thank you to Dr. Zuniga for feeding all of our students that came and, uh, participated, I really enjoyed, you know, poor Dr. Zuniga, uh, was running back and forth and bought all the pizzas at the pizza joint, and then had to go back, because they hadn't cooked enough to feed all of our volunteers, so I just wanna thank you for that. I wanna thank the Superintendent Parent Advisory Committee, all the moms that were there, uh, working with, uh, the leadership of, uh, Edith de Chavaria, thank you for her work, and, uh, also thank you to, uh, Mr. Artiaga, who always comes out and greets the parents as they're coming in, and all of the different people in the, in the district here, support staff, that were out there putting the numbers on the cars, so that the, the food people knew exactly how many, uh, you know, containers of Chinese food each family was gonna take, and, uh, uh, enjoyed the dancers, the dragon dancers, and thank you to our teacher at Rosemead High School, I always forget his name, the gentleman who brings the, uh, the dragon dancers, and, Andrew Sam, thank you to him and all his crew that he brings, and kids from all over, not just from our district, but from neighboring districts that participate in that, uh, uh, you know, keeping their culture alive and, and dancing and stuff, so, also, uh, just to all the staff that was here, all the lighting, all the, the setup, everybody behind the scenes, thank you. I know that, uh, our community, uh, really appreciates that, our Asian community. Um, I, I did learn how to say, uh, Happy New Year in Vietnamese, I did not know how to do that, but my colleague, Mr. Qui Wen taught me, chuk mong nam moy, chuk mong nam moy, so I kept repeating that to every car that came by, and then I knew gong he fa choi. Now, is that Cantonese or Mandarin, Mr. Qui?
That's Mandarin, I don't speak Mandarin either.
Yeah, so that, those are the only two I know, so next year I'll, I'll increase my repertoire, you know, of gong he fa choi, and I could tell I was saying it right, because every time the car would roll up, and it was like an Asian family, they would get their fist and then put it in their hand, and then they would bow to me, so I'm like, okay, then I got my fist, put my hand, and bowed right back to them, so I could tell they appreciate it. Uh, I didn't need to know, uh, that they appreciate it by their words, but by their facial expressions, those are universal, they would smile, and, and the Latino people, I, I had them repeat that, so that was a lot of fun, and I know that, that took a lot of coordination, Dr. Zuniga, uh, thank you, thank you for doing that, and, uh, I want families to know, like, no, we're not, we're not just gonna do a, you know, posada for all the Spanish-speaking families, but we're also gonna do some for, uh, we do have twenty-five percent of our population in this district that, uh, that does that, so, um, I enjoyed that. We also had, uh, another meeting where, um, we came together and had a little come to Jesus, you know, the board, about things we like, uh, and things we don't like, and we were able to say each, tell each other some things to our faces, you know? Miss, Dr. Galavies and I had a little exchange, and, uh, you know, other people on the board, I got to hear her perspective, and she heard my perspective, and the board president talk about his perspective, and how he wants to run the meetings, and then we kinda told them what, what we think, and so, it was good, overall, uh, we, we all participated, we all got what we had inside and set it out, and, uh, I think it's good, because if you truly wanna, uh, exercise, you know, twenty-first century skills such as collaboration, communication, critical thinking, and creativity, you can't come here and pretend like we're one little loving family, you know, every family has troubles, and, uh, when you talk and you communicate, then we can, we can move forward. We don't have to like each other, but we do have to remember who our number-one client is, students, 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 and their parents. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Padilla. Trustee, Dr. Galavies?
Good evening. Um, I also was able to attend the Lunar New Year celebration for a short amount of time, but it was really beautiful, and I enjoyed that experience. Um, and that's pretty much it. Oh, I'm looking forward to the Trades Day tomorrow, uh, Fernando La Desma, that is tomorrow, right? A night with the trades, I think that's really important, and CTE is something that is building here in the state in California quite a bit, there's a lot of grants out there regarding CTE right now, and just so many programs, and we are finding that a lot of students are very interested in the trades, there's been a spike, which there wasn't in the past, this is actually kinda like, research is showing that this is new, so I'm very excited that our district is promoting the trades, because there are a lot of students who wanna go down that pathway, and it's an excellent pathway, a lot of those people make a lot more money than most of us up here, so, it's a great opportunity for our students, I'm looking forward to that event. And, oh, good luck to all our teams playing in, um, CIF playoff games, because that's really awesome. That's it.
Thank you, trustee Galavies.
Mr. Briones, I forgot one person, can I share one? Really quick, um, Dr. McGinnis, I know you're there, thank you so much for all the work that you've done to coordinate the whole, uh, career tech education and CTE, yeah, just like Dr. Galavies says, there's a big interest from our students, and, uh, I just wanna publicly thank you and give credit where credit is due, I know you made a lot of calls. Briones.
Thank you. Uh, trustee, Dr. Guzman?
No announcements from me at this time.
Thank you, and I just have a few, uh, items to report back on. Um, Mr. Padilla mentioned it, I wanna say thank you to the board and cabinet for participating in the last week's governing study session, it, uh, was a nice opportunity for us to, to come together and go over our protocols, and have a discussion about expectations, uh, as a, as a governing body, as well as our roles as individual trustees versus as a board, or as a governance team with Dr. Zuniga, um, and really to, to make sure that we're all on the same page, so I look forward to continuing those conversations into the future, ensuring that we're all, uh, staying abreast of the changing environment, both at the national level, as well as here in California. Um, this past weekend, on Saturday, the fifteenth, I had the opportunity to attend Congressman Gilces Naros's Community Swearing In Ceremony at the University of Laverne, it was a very nice event, uh, well-attended, it was nice to celebrate. Uh, finally, the, the congressmembers, um, beginning here as our representative in the San Gabriel Valley. Um, and then the last item that I wanted to, excuse me, that I wanted to, um, discuss or touch upon, is, um, you know, every day is something new from the Trump administration, and unfortunately, very few of those things are positive in any way, shape, or form, so, um, this past week, there was a directive to, from the Trump administration to end DEI programs or initiatives, uh, at public schools, uh, or lose federal funding. So, I haven't heard anything specifically from, say, the California Department of Education, or any other department for that matter. Um, however, here in California, a lot of what we discuss in our classrooms and in our curriculum, um, we incorporate a lot of DEI into those, those conversations, including, you know, mandating ethnic studies, and so, I'm, just wanna let everyone know, we need to be prepared for a fight to defend our values. Um, I'm not one to just roll over and say, absolutely, we're gonna cut all this, because you said so. Um, in California, we are very strong believers in local control, and ensuring that the needs of our community and our students is met, and I'm not gonna just take a blank directive, especially when there's no, really no force behind it through an executive order from anybody, uh, to tell us how or what we can teach, so I just wanna make sure that, uh, folks are keeping abreast of what's going on, but also understand that the multitude of executive orders and the, the chaos that's going on in Washington DC right now, it's by design. It's to overwhelm everybody, it's to get us to be, become, you know, complacent, to become desensitized, to become tired, and we need to be cognizant of those efforts and understand that we here are here, we here as a board, in California, we're here to defend our students, to defend our values and our beliefs, and so, just be mindful of, you know, what the next couple of years will bring. Uh, and that concludes my report, so thank you, everyone. Moving on to, on our agenda, we have an information presentation on our math update, I'll hand it over to Dr. Zuniga.
Yeah, thank you, Board President Briones, it's my pleasure to have a few folks here with us this evening, who are spearheading the district's math plan, and I wanted to just set, set the actual settings regarding the reason why we're here. Uh, we have been providing the board with updates on our math plan, uh, since last year, I believe, and I do wanna acknowledge the folks behind the scenes and working hand-in-hand with our entire school community, in moving our implementation plan forward. Uh, just to set the actual setting for us tonight, the purpose and the initial slides you'll see is just an overview of what we have presented to the board in the past, knowing that we have some new board members, I thought it was important for us to revisit some of the goals, some of the expectations that our district has really laid, laid down on all of our, um, schools, not only our, you know, as far as classrooms, but also our school administration team, with support from our, our district administration, but the understanding that we're still learning, we're still, uh, finding ways to navigate the plan, to make sure that everybody feels supported, and that we're able to implement the plan with fidelity as well. And I'm honored to work alongside an outstanding educational service team, uh, starting with our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Rivas, who unfortunately had an emergency this evening, not able to be with us tonight, but we have some gen, uh, gentleman here by the name of Dr. Kirk McGinnis, who is our Director of Instruction and Curriculum, he will, uh, represent the district alongside our Teacher on Special Assignment, and I wanna also, um, acknowledge Mr. Sanchez's work too, and Catalina Sines, our, our math consultant, who we have established a relationship with for over, over a year now, I believe now, right? So, we've kind of adopted her, and she's fit in pretty well, over the last couple of times that she's not only presented to the board, but just engaged within our, you know, within our families, our staff, even some of our students that have spoken to her too, about the importance of math, and the connectedness that we have, uh, all from relevancy from our elementary schools, middle schools, all the way to high schools too. Uh, so, at that, at this time, I'm gonna hand it over to Dr. McGinnis, who will take over the presentation, and again, formally probably introduce our folks that are, are spending some time with us this evening. Good evening, Dr. McGinnis.
Uh, thank you, uh, Dr. Zuniga, for that introduction, and the context, uh, exactly why we're here this evening. Um, President Briones, members of cabinet, uh, of the, uh, board, uh, Dr. Zuniga, cabinet, uh, our community, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Uh, we are here to give an update, uh, also to place some context on the work that we've been doing, uh, to welcome our new board members to our math plan, uh, and to the work that we've been doing, the goals that we have set for us, uh, and this is a large team. Uh, Dr. Rivas, uh, has been guiding a lot of this direction and, and, and work, uh, but we come to the table together, uh, we have, uh, a lot of minds and a lot of different perspectives, with our math tosa and with our math consultant, so, this is a, and our leaders in our, in the classrooms and on our site, so this is a collective effort, um, and one that I'm proud to be part of, so, um, tonight, to begin, uh, I'd like to, uh, parallel the work that our classroom teachers are doing, uh, with our new, um, instructional vision in our district, one of the evidence-based practices that we've identified as, as supporting that, um, an important element in our classroom instruction, is to start with a really clear vision of what we want our students to learn, and how they're going to be exhibiting that learning, so, uh, I'm gonna model what, uh, we're asking our teachers to do, is to begin with a content objective. So, tonight, we're gonna be providing an update on our math plan, we're gonna be summarizing our key goals and that progress, uh, we're also gonna review some of the NWA district data, identify the trends that we're seeing, and, uh, support that with recommendations for our next steps. Um, the language objective in our classrooms is what, uh, the productive output that our students are going to be doing, so I'll dispense with asking you to do a lot of productive output, but we, we certainly welcome input and questions as, along the way, as always. Um, but we want to be able to, at the end of this, is to be clear about, clearly be able to communicate the actions from our district math plan, and how we're using NWEA as one of those tools to help support us in moving forward. Um, and then, as always, um, actually, Mr. Nguyen, you were talking about this just a moment ago, using data to drive our, uh, just our decisions and our, uh, around instruction and how we support our students, so we're gonna be doing a lot, that same thing tonight as well. I wanna give you a, a, an over, a broad overview of our district math plan, uh, we established this multi-year plan to address, um, math, um, making A-plus adjustments to history, um, is something that we're committed to doing, this is, uh, like I said earlier, not something that happens in isolation, this is something that happens in, uh, collaboration with our, our students, our parents, our, uh, teacher leaders, our site leaders, and, and us here, uh, in this building as well. Uh, it's, the math plan is organized into four, uh, critical areas, you see them, they're on the left-hand side, and then the right-hand side of this table are some examples of the work that we're doing, we've already embarked upon, and we're continuing, bless you, uh, continuing to work on as, as we move forward, so I'll speak to some of those, uh, to shed light on the work that we're doing. In the area of curriculum, curriculum alignment and focus, one of the biggest projects we've undertaken this year is to identify the priority standards, um, you'll, I'll talk a little bit more about what that looks like here in a minute, but this was Integrated Math One, Two, and Three, um, our IM One, Two, and Three teams, uh, came together, um, over a period of time throughout this, this school year, um, and I'm really excited about that work, number one, for us, but also, we brought along our IM One teacher, uh, leaders from our partner districts, so this is a, one of the continuing steps that we're taking with this vertical alignment and engaging our partner districts in this, in this, in this process. Um, so we've, that articulation has been happening, um, that continues, uh, through our, our collaborative administrative leadership series, what we call CALS, which I have a slide on a little bit, I'll talk to you a little bit more about that. Uh, in the area of assessment and data, um, as you know, we've brought in, uh, the Northwest Evaluation Association, NWEA, uh, we piloted it two years ago, last year, we had a full district rollout, this year, we are really clicking along nicely, like, we have, uh, we've, we've worked through some of the kinks, we identified the right tests, the, that is gonna meet our needs at this point, um, which is the MAPGROWTH six plus, um, because that gives us a little bit more, uh, connection to things like the integration with IXL, with the skill plans for our students, um, and a common language that our teachers across all of our sites are using, so we're really excited about that. Um, I mentioned at the outset, our instructional vision, um, and, um, our math teams are not, not unlike any of the other departments, everyone's embracing this work around the instructional vision, but the math teacher leaders have been really identifying, okay, what do, what do content and language objectives look and sound like and feel like in a math class, and is that different than an English class and a science class? Um, so, they're embarking upon that, and, uh, I'm excited about the district walkthroughs that we were able to participate in, we just have had our second round, um, last month, we're fin, and our third round will be coming up in March, uh, where we are able to look, uh, at instruction across all of our campuses and all of our sites, uh, and being able to provide feedback to our site leaders around the implementation of that specific, uh, EBP, evidence-based practice, um, and so, that's, uh, an opportunity for us to see math instruction and give feedback, uh, to the teacher leaders there. And then finally, the culture of learning is really about, um, this continual process, uh, this goal-setting process specifically around math, um, but then also around, um, celebration of progress and setting goals. We also are changing the way that we operate in- We also are changing the way that we operate in, 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 in terms of math. We've looked at, we've adjusted our Integrated Math 1 class sizes, we've really supported our teacher collaboration around not only the prioritization of standards, but then also what does that look like in reality to implement in their classrooms and supporting them? And then this summer, we're excited to bring on, and actually, we have our, our support partner from Rio Hondo College that is here, Yolanda Emerson. But we're excited to, to step into this new partnership and see what the Rio Hondo Math Academy has to provide in support for our students. So, so all that being said, our math plan is something, it's an iterative process, it's a plan that we developed and we're implementing. And as we are implementing, we're realizing this is an area of strength, this is an area of focus, here's some areas that we might want to tweak and adjust as we're seeing the implementation in our classrooms. So, and with that, I'm going to hand it over to Alex next, our math tosa, who is no stranger to this group. For our new board members, the, our math tosa position was newly created in the middle of last school year. So we're, we're past the one-year anniversary of his work and, and I will say he's, I believe he's done more than a year's work in the short time that he's been in this position. We were fortunate to be able to pull him out of one of our very own classrooms here, so he already has that connection with, with our, our system and our, he's got trust and faith with the teachers. So he's been able to really kind of move a lot of these initiatives through in a, in an expeditious manner. So I'm going to hand it over to Alex to talk a little bit about our history and then some data. So, next.
Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you for having me. I'm Alex Sanchez, I'm the math tosa for the Almani Union High School District, and I'm very honored and proud to be here today as I am a product of this district. I'm an alumni from South Almani High School, class of '04. And it's pretty cool to see, you know, a panel with, you know, my mentors, former classmates, you know, it's pretty surreal, so it's pretty cool to be here. So what I'm going to do first is give you a little history lesson on what we've done so far up to this point. Again, I was hired midway through the, the year last year, so this is kind of a little bit past my, my first year here in this position, but we've been busy. So, Fall 2023, NWA IXL was adopted district-wide, we adopted an integrated test and the Growth 6+ test. Some schools were doing integrated, some schools were doing Growth 6+. And we formally started the math initiative, which Dr. McGinnis just talked a little bit about. We were hired, the consultant and I, in winter of 2024, and we created the first draft of the math plan. When our math consultant was hired, she began doing the work of the needs assessment, which involved doing math focus groups, doing surveys, meeting with all the schools, meeting with all stakeholders, including the, the, the board at the time, getting information and seeing what systems we currently have in place to set our students, teachers, leaders up for success. We do have a, we were also able to publish that needs assessment, and we do have a copy for our new board members if you'd like to request one. Dr. Zuniga or Dr. Lado Rivas can help you, get you a copy of that. Moving into the summer, we updated the summer curriculum, the pacing, we offered PD for outside teachers to be able to teach our, our new resources. And we started the math collaboration with our partner schools in the district, a very exciting time that we've started to begin those conversations and working with each other. So that was a, something to celebrate, something exciting that, that happened in the previous year, or last year. This year, in the fall, we adopted the NWA 6+ district-wide, we are now giving the, the same assessment, which has IXL integration. So what that means is that when students take the NWA 6+, Growth 6+ test, they are given a RIT score, which is essentially a number that lets IXL know, this is what the student knows about math in each of these domains, like geometry, algebra, statistics, and so on. So what IXL does then is it creates an individual skill plan that is tailored toward that student's needs or that student's zone of proximal development. So what skills is that student ready to learn? So that's one of the, the new features that we had access to, that we didn't have access to prior with the integrated series, which is why we switched to the Growth 6+. We gave out the Growth 6+ to all schools in the district, we collected that data and began trainings on the teachers on how to use the, the data, and then also set goals. And we set goals with teachers, students, families, counselors, leaders, on how we're going to use this data in the fall to set up our students for success for the next time we test them in the winter. We also began our work with the Common Priority Standards, we identified the priority standards for IM 1, 2, and 3 in the fall. And we also, well, we, I guess, the, the district reduced the IM 1 class sizes to no more than 20. And we're going to talk about that, why that was significant, you know, in just a minute. Moving on to the, the winter, this winter, we looked at, we made the NWA data available to parents and students on Synergy. So now they, students and, and parents could access the data easily, they can access their reports, they can see how their, our kids are doing in all the NWA assessments and look at all their historical data. And what's great about NWA is that it will store the, the data of that student for as many times as they take the, the test. And we also began doing trainings again with leaders, teachers, students, and families, looking at the data now, looking at growth, looking at achievement, who grew, who didn't grow, why did students that grew, why did they grow, the students that didn't? We looked at why maybe they haven't grown and looked at for possible solutions and how to make adjustments for the spring. How are we going to make adjustments to those classes that didn't show that much growth so that we can hopefully see more growth in the spring? We also updated the middle school math placement form, which we saw that some of our students were maybe not necessarily placed in the, in the right class. We, we took feedback from the counselors, we updated so that we make sure that when students are coming into our school, they're being placed in the appropriate class that suited for their needs. And then, big celebration, we were able to create a common assessment for IM 1, 2, and 3, which are going to be ready to be rolled out in the fall. So that's exciting. That was a, a big initiative by the, the district and the teachers in the district. And I actually want to celebrate the teachers in our district and thank them so much for their hard work and dedication. They really put in a lot of time, 13 days of professional development, those were full days, 35 IM 1, 2, IM 3 teachers, district-wide, we included sped teachers. And the cool part is that we're actually able to include our partner districts to come in and collaborate with us for IM 1. And we're hoping that we're able to give the common assessments at the same time and, and hopefully be able to look at data together. So that work is happening through the work that they're doing through CALs, and Dr. Zuniga will, sorry, Dr. McGinnis will be speaking about CALs and how, how that work is coming along. Now, looking at the NWEA, for just a quick kind of review, it's a, the, the MAP6, Growth 6+ is an assessment that we're giving out at the beginning, middle, and end of the school year. So we administer it three times, fall, winter, and spring. It's an adapted assessment, it takes about 45 minutes to complete. The great thing about the Growth 6+ also is that it also includes the English and Spanish version, and they're looking to support other languages in the future. It also projects CAS proficiency from the ninth grade. So from the ninth grade, we can predict with a pretty good sense of accuracy if a student will be projected, projected to get a Level 3 or 4 in the CAS. So that allows us to provide some interventions, you know, from the ninth grade and support that student for the next three years that they're going to be in our care. And as I mentioned earlier, the IXL skill, skill plans. So students get a custom skill plan tailored to their needs on IXL based on their RIT score in NWEA. So students are able to reach content at their zone of proximal development, and the idea is that we're trying to help them close some of those gaps that they might have in, in their learning. So a, a lot of what we've been doing with this data is we've been analyzing the data, we've been looking at where do students need most support, and also celebrate growth. Growth is something, it's a new metric that we haven't used in the district before. We would celebrate like As, Bs, good grades, but we never really celebrated like progress, right? And I don't know that we ever gave a student a very direct line, like with the IXL, IXL skill plans, where we say, if you practice these skills on this skill plan, you will get better at math and you will see your RIT score improve the next time you take the assessment, and we're going to celebrate you for it. Whether you have an F or an A in my class, we're going to celebrate you because you improved your learning in math. So I think that's an amazing thing, and that's really one of the, the key and most important features that, that this assessment brings to us, that's really going to help us push a culture of a growth mindset and a culture of continuous improvement, which is something that we really need in this district. We need to really celebrate those little victories, big or small. It can't just be focusing on who's got an A, who's got a B, who's got a C. We've got to focus on who's making progress, who's moving there. You're not there yet, but we're getting there. So just to provide some context, as we get into a little bit of a data dive into our school data and the district-wide data, the data that you see in front of you, this was the achievement data from the fall, not from the winter, not from the test we just took, this was from the fall. So this represents the achievement level of our incoming ninth graders or arising ninth graders. These students did not receive any instruction from us in the district. And again, this isn't like a gotcha, or this isn't like a finger pointing thing, this is just the data, the data's what the, what the data is. And now we have to use this information to make, to make some adjustments with our students and see how we're going to support them. And I think it's fairly self-explanatory, the green and blue would represent students who are proficient in mathematics, they're within the 60th and 99th percentile. Students who are in the yellow, those are your middle-of-the-road students, they're within the 40th and the 60th percentile. And then the ones in the red and orange, those would represent students who need a lot of support in math, who are, you know, within the 40th and 0th percentile. So we see that our schools' math teachers, they all, depending on what school you're at, you, you have different challenges. So it's really hard to, to have, have the same expectation out of every school of all of, all of the math teachers. We clearly have different challenges, the data is what the data is. Now we have a responsibility to support our students, depending how many proficient students we get, we have that responsibility to really look at the data and make some adjustments to support them in their learning. The following quadrant showing you is the median achievement versus median conditional growth quadrant for the ninth grade. And I am focusing on the ninth grade a little bit because that's our baseline, that's our, really our first class that's starting taking the, the Growth 6+. So we're going to follow these students and see how are they performing over time, over the next two years that they have left with us until they take the CAS and, and really monitor their, their growth. So you'll see on the top, on the right-hand corner, the, the school abbreviations, and you'll see a PR, which stands for percentile rank. This represents achievement level, and the CGP, that represents conditional growth percentile. So how much are students growing? Just for, as a, as a baseline, a 50th percentile rank represents an average student, a typical, so if we're talking about a ninth grader, a typical ninth grader throughout the nation, that's would be your 50th percentile rank. For conditional percentile, conditional growth percentile, 50, 50 in the conditional growth percentile would represent typical average growth on track to do one year's worth of learning, right? Because as a, in education, we expect students to learn one year's worth of learning every year, right? So above 50, great, below 50, not that great. If you look at the quadrant, the quadrant, we're going to do a little math here, the X-axis represents the achievement percentile, right? So low achievement to the left, high achieving students to the right. The Y-axis, that represents the conditional growth percentile rank. So how much are students growing? Not a, a low growth towards the bottom, high growth towards the top. So if you look at the top right-hand corner, it says high achievement, high growth, those are students who were high achieving in the fall and had high growth in the winter test, so from fall to winter. The top left-hand corner, a low achievement, high growth, those would be students who were identified as low achieving in the fall, but showed high growth from fall to winter. On the bottom left-hand corner, low achievement, low growth, students who were low achieving in the fall and had low growth from fall to winter. And then on the bottom right-hand corner, we see high achievement, low growth, those are students who were high achievement, high achieving in the fall, but low growth in Just give you a moment to take it in, and if you have questions, please. Yes, Mr. Nguyen.
Okay. Real quick, Mr. Nguyen, sorry, just before we ask questions, just ask to be recognized, so we're not talking over one another. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, I have a question. You know, a couple of weeks ago, on January 31st, you, Mr. Sines, sent out a math war report, and on it, you know, 31.32% that have regression and 4.13 that they had no growth. And that's alarming, that's 35, almost like 35, 36% that did not make any growth at all, all going back, regressing. And, you know, on the memo, they say that, you know, you tried to zero in the reason where and how it happened, you know, and, and this is very alarming, so can you elaborate on it, where and how it happened?
I believe you're referring to the, the donut graph?
Yes.
Yes? Well, we have to take into consideration that this is the first year we really implement the NWA assessment, the, the proper way that we're supposed to implement it. And we, we did kind of give the, the, the district kind of like a vision of what we wanted to do with this, we give our teachers a vision of what we wanted to do with this assessment. But we, I mean, until you do it, there hasn't been, let me backtrack, until we actually go through the first process, it's really hard to get to students and teachers to buy in. And I'll be honest with you, when we first brought in the NWA assessment and we, we brought in IXL, there wasn't a lot of buy-in, right? There wasn't, like, teachers weren't that into it, maybe students weren't that into it. I think now, after we've done all the winter trainings and we've started doing celebrations and we started doing celebrations with students, faculty, and schools, I think that's changing. So if you're asking to take a stu, if you're asking one of our students to take a test that they have no context, they're, they're not going to give a lot of effort. And I think that's what we saw. I think as we look into the spring assessment, I think we might see less of that red part of the, of that donut that you, that you see there. Because again, if you're not doing anything with the assessment, if it's not, if you're, if it's not relevant to the student, if it's not important to you, to the teacher, to the parent, to the district, then a student's not going to care, they're not going to give their best effort, they're just going to guess, and you're probably going to see that kind of data, so.
Where it happened? I, I asked you where, which school side it happened?
The, the red?
Yeah, the red and the yellow.
That's district-wide. That's district-wide data.
Yeah, I know, that, that's the EMUSD overall.
Yes.
But can you localize which side it happened more than other? You have all the data.
Well, I mean, if we, if we look at the, I think it's.
Low achievement, low growth. South Almani High School.
Yeah, I was saying, it's, I mean, low achievement, low growth, right? It's, the, the percentile ranks are, they're on the screen, again, anything low than 50s, not the best, same thing for conditional growth percentile, anything below 50 is not great. So that's where you would probably find a lot of the, the low achievement or a lot of that red bar that you see in that donut.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have one more question. You know, you go back to the median achievement versus median conditional growth quadrant, ninth grade only, look at Rosemead, the percent, the percentage ranking is 69 and conditional growth go down to 58, that 11 point going down.
Okay, so, those are two different.
Yeah, I know.
Measurements. So one is achievement and one is growth, right? So achievement represents like how much math does, does a student know, right? And so 69 would be, wouldn't be bad, right? Looking at Rosemead. And that 69 is not, is not connected to, I guess, 58 as, as in like going down? The, the 58 represents the conditional growth percentile. So how much are students growing in that school from the fall to, to the winter?
Winter, yeah.
Yes.
So you started out like 69%?
So that means that, that if, if let's say Rosemead High School had a conditional growth percentile of 50, that means that Rosemead High School's students are on track to get one year's worth of growth. So since they're at 58, they're actually getting more than one year's worth of growth.
On the other hand, Mountain View High, High School, the. On the other hand, Mountain View High, High School, the percentage ranking is thirty-three and conditional growth, because they, they compare two things that go, they go up quite a bit, twenty-six, you know, relatively speaking, twenty-six percent. That's a, that's a lot of improvement for Mountain View High School District. Kudos.
We celebrate that. Let's go Mountain View.
Mr. Banyas and his leadership team.
Definitely.
And, you know, I rarely give praise, but that's a very remarkable improvement.
It, it is. And especially if when you saw the, the previous slide, um, and you saw, um, the, you know, achievement level that the students are coming in. I mean, they've got a really tough task there. And looking at the growth that we see here, I mean, that's, that's huge. That's big. We celebrate that. They had the second highest growth with our, um, ninth graders in the, in the district.
It is big and that's the school that you came from. And, you know, for the new board members, you know, uh, it was, it was war to bring in this, this assessment tool to, to be uniform throughout the district. So, uh, and the school that did balk was Mountain View and we went at it. We went back and forth. I even had a teacher that came here and, you know, accused me of discrimination and all this, all this stuff. But when I see this, uh, it makes me really happy because they had low achievement and they had the growth. And the way I look at this, it's kind of an attendance. We always recognize the perfect attendance. And I'm a great example of that. Child welfare and attendance. We always give prizes and all these things to, to the, uh, the perfect attendance, but we never look at growth. That kid who was in the chronic, you know, eighteen or more days. And because it's hard to look at that, because we don't really have a tool to look at that. So I'm glad that we selected the growth six plus and that we have this. Because before, we had no model. Everybody did whatever the heck they wanted in this district. And now it's great to see, to have these celebrations and that teachers can actually see the work that you guys have done. Because not only did we screw up, and I'll, and I'll say it, Dr. McGinnis, you and Dr. Rivas, you screwed up. Why? Because initially you guys selected, uh, the, the other assessment, the assessment that we already knew what it was going to tell us, that our kids were low. Hey, hey, we already knew that, but we needed to know is where are they low and what do we need to do to plug in those holes to bring them up? And I get it that we couldn't teach the curriculum at like sixth grade level if this kid had, you know, was scoring at a sixth grade level. But it did spark the conversation about what the hell are we going to do with our math classes? You can expose them all you want to grade level, level curriculum. Pero si el chamo no está a este nivel, what are you going to do? And that's the million dollar question right now that you all have to solve of how we're going to plug in those holes to have them grow. But do I give kudos to, uh, 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 Mountain View High School? Yes. Am I extremely concerned about South Elmonte? You're damn right that I am. Because when I looked at the data, not only did they not grow, they regress. So that's big time. Like what the hell's going on over there for me as a board member? Like, we gotta do something there. Arroyo and Rosemead, I'm not going to lie, it's our California district where schools, you know? People refer to Arroyo as the goody-two-shoes schools. Not me, other, other educators in this district. Was I expecting that? Yeah. But do I, do I enjoy seeing Elmani High School getting up into that quadrant and Mountain View? Damn right that I do. Because you know what? That's going to bring forth some equity to those children.
Yes.
We didn't continue to do what we've always done, which was low test scores, low test scores, low test scores. Now we're getting these discussions. You're setting the goals. I've heard all the right things. I remember when you last came here, uh, Dr. Rivas was still, still telling me, oh, we're trying to identify the power standards. And I said, how, how long does it take to identify the damn power standards? Get some teachers. You answered the question. You what, you took what, thirteen days?
Yeah.
Whatever it's done. But we were always having that discussion that we as a district had not even identified what the power standards were. How the hell can we be teaching to them if everybody's teaching all over the place? So the fact that we now have the same assessment throughout the district, there's talks going on, there's goals being set by the school, by the parents, by the, by the students, lots of celebrations. And I give you kudos and I give Catalina signs and I put her on the hot seat like, we pay you a lot of money. We better see something. We do see something, except for one school, so.
Mr. Nguyen, you have additional comments or questions?
You know, with regard to Cal, I, I was asked by one of the superintendent of Rosemead, is, does Cal help? I said, yes, it helps. Only you have a nine-seven session, so throughout the whole year? By the time the next Cal, it's too late already. So I would recommend, do you have, besides those Cal meetings, do you set up any meeting, you know, to each school, uh, feeding school district? Because each school district, feeder school district is different. They, they need a different, their demographic is different. And, you know, just, just count on the count on, um, alone, it won't help. That's what from my perspective. You know, and we, you know, we need more interaction with the feeder school district. Have you encountered any challenges or any difficulty of, you know, with any school, feeder school district that you working with?
As far as Cal's, I think, uh, Drs., uh, McGinnis can speak to that.
Okay, okay. So, so like I said, you know, um, you, you look at the, the red bar and the, the orange bar, you know, like I say, you know, it's big volume, you know, like Arroyo and, you know, Rosemead are on top from ninth grade, you know, like only like thirty-two percent, you know, that below grade standard, but Arroyo like, you know, little bit more, but so what? But, but those are the best performing ninth grade, you know, you know, high performing, you know, uh, school and it's big volumes.
But Mr. Nguyen, one of the things he's trying to tell you is that we needed a baseline. We never had a baseline. The data is the data, not good, not bad, but that's the data. So then now we can make data-driven decisions. And we as a board can clearly see exactly where we're at, whereas before we didn't have that. Is it low? Yes. But at least now we have a starting point where before we didn't have that. But I guess, I, I hear what you're saying about how it's so low and how it might have gone down, but at least now we have something to go on. Before we had nothing, nothing.
I, I know it's a mon- monumental task for all of you, because this is the history. You make history in the history of Elmani UN High School District. Even though I've been on board on the first year, but I've been watching it for a long, long time. So there never been a standard. There never been a baseline.
And, and they told you and they replied to you, this is a problem that God created over many years, right? Are we going to fix it overnight? No, we cannot fix it overnight. But we sure in hell better start somewhere. We got to start because we only have these kids for four years. That was the conversation we had when we were trying to identify the power standards. Well, there's all these power standards. Well, you only have the kids for four years. So sit down and figure out which ones are the most powerful ones that are going to get the most bang for our buck and give these kids the best education. And we finally did that. So I, I, I do give kudos and stuff. So I, I get what you're saying. You're saying like, what's it going to do for these kids that are in high school for the next, these next four years? Are we going to bring everybody up to grade level?
We're going to try. And, uh, we're going to try really hard at it too. And one of the big things that we have that we didn't have before that we just, I, I think barely got it most recently is buy-in. Buy-in from our community, buy-in from our students, buy-in from our teachers. We, we've been doing this as a collective effort. We have done our best to not work in a, in a vacuum. We've been trying to bring in everybody together in this process. And it's taken time. I mean, it, it wasn't something that where they just were bought in the, the very first time.
The difference is you're doing it with them, not to them.
Exactly.
The mentality was always that the outside consultant from Harvard, uh, Harvard, right? Harvard? They were, and you, you guys were doing it to them, doing it to them. No, you're not doing it to them. You're doing it with them. They're coming along for the ride. But it wasn't until you built that relationship that then they got to see like, okay, they're not in here to get me with an aha moment. And the consultant coming in and the visits and, you know, Dr. McGinnis, they're not trying to catch us doing something wrong. It's what are we going to do to improve this? And I think that's the difference. You're not doing it to them. You're doing it with them.
Correct.
Where, where, then that's where the buy-in comes in. So.
Yes.
If, if I may really quick, just two things before, um, we move on. One, um, actually three things. One, I wanted to welcome, uh, Yolanda Emerson from Rio Honda College, Dean of Educational Services. Take the opportunity to join us tonight. I want to make sure that you're recognized for being here. Um, two, one, you know, a lot of times we talk about the impact of our words. And in this case, I want to be really mindful about when we talk about buy-in, it makes it sound as though it's optional. Where, where we really are asking our students and our faculty, um, and our, and our district teams, we're asking for a commitment.
Yes.
You know, so when we're, when we're having these conversations, I, I ask that we are mindful about how we're presenting the, the, the thoughts to staff or how we're engaging in conversation. Um, I've learned that words carry a lot of weight. So when we're talking about, and this isn't a knock on anybody, this is obviously an opportunity for us to grow and to learn as well. And especially with students, because oftentimes students are not accustomed to this level of discourse. Um, and especially to, to, you know, an adult level of conversation. So when we're having those conversations with students, we're asking that for their, their commitment. We're asking for their family's commitments as well uh, to have that growth mindset that you've talked about. And I'm really glad that you talked about celebrating growth. Because that's, uh, it dovetails into conversations that we've had in other facets of our school district as well. You know, we've, uh, celebrated when we, we talk about, uh, improving attendance. We've celebrated students who have improved their attendance. And sometimes those students will ask, why am I being recognized? Like I still miss days or I'm still late.
Why did you give me this sweater, Mr. Breonis?
But at the same time, we remind them, you've made an improvement. You've made a concerted effort to do better and you've made that commitment. So I want to be mindful of the language that we use. Um, the other thing too, I, I just want to ensure that we have an opportunity for discussion from everyone. So continue with your presentation. And again, I do ask the members of the board, if you want to, if you have a question, ask to be recognized. Uh, but be mindful that your question may be answered in a slide, um, in the presentation. So, Mr. Sanchez, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Board President. Uh, moving on to the next slide, um, now we're looking at the district. So you had a, a quadrant with just, uh, the ninth grade. Um, this is the entire district by school. All students, yes. Again, overall, uh, we saw a lot of tremendous growth, uh, from Arroyo. Want to congratulate the, the Knights. They did have the most growth in the district, um, overall. Coming in in second place was, uh, Rosemead High School and followed, uh, by Elmani High School.
Wow.
Um, I forgot to acknowledge in the previous slide, uh, Arroyo High School had the most growth with the ninth graders. Second place was Mountain View High School. And then third place was Rosemead High School. So congratulations to those schools. They're doing, uh, amazing things, uh, in, in their schools and congratulate the leaders at those schools who are really, uh, doing a lot of great things for our, our kids and our community.
I have a question.
Yes.
Go ahead.
In the completion rate, I know, you know, uh, I was always critical when I would look at Mountain View High School because the completion rate was always, you know, pretty low. And that was one of the schools that I was very critical of because they, they balked initially when we started, right? But now I see that they're at ninety-four percent, which is, you know, Rosemead's ninety-five, South Elmani's at ninety percent though. Why is it low, uh, eighty-nine at Arroyo High School? And why is it ninety percent at South Elmani High School? When the rest of the district has like ninety-four or higher?
Well, just to, to take into consideration, we did give out this assessment, um, during the first two weeks that we came back from, um, winter break.
Yes.
And that's when the fires were, you know, kind of going through our community.
Absenteeism?
Uh, well, we, we had to close down the schools for a couple of days. And then some districts had a, um, or some schools had a, let their kids out early. So that really affected our testing window.
Got it. And the, the growth six plus assessment is, is done, it's not a timed test? And they can take it over two days, three days, however they need? What's the average number of days that kids completed?
Um, most students will get it done in one session. Some students might need a, a second day.
All right. No further questions. Thank you.
Um, this is, uh, data that's essentially the same data, but not broken down by grade. So you see where the ninth graders, the tenth graders and eleventh graders fall as far as their percentile rank and conditional growth percentile. So, um, overall, it's nice to see that, that we're all in that, um, low achievement, high growth. And in just a minute, um, it's Catalina Science is going to explain why that's a big deal and why that's so important. And how that's going to play into how we're going to move those kids over from, uh, the, uh, quadrant two to quadrant one. Um, one thing I did want to spotlight, um, is the, I, um, IXL usage, um, from the district, that bar graph on the bottom right-hand corner.
Question, Mr. Breonis?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay. Yeah, let, um, let's have Mr. Sanchez finish that slide and then we'll go to questions.
Okay.
So on the bottom right-hand corner, um, you'll see, um, the X-axis represents the grade level of the students. Um, the Y-axis represents the number of questions per week on average that students were completing. The blue bar represents, uh, last year and the green bar represents this year. And we saw a definite uptick in usage, uh, district-wide, uh, from last year to this year. Um, and one of the things that we want to take, uh, into consideration is that IXL has done, uh, research studies on, um, usage and achievement. And they have something called the IXL effect, which says a student, if a student does fifteen questions per week, they are, um, going to outperform students that don't do fifteen questions per week. So if you have a student at the fifty-eighth, uh, fiftieth percentile rank, the student who, uh, does IXL and does fifteen questions per week, they are likely to be more at the fifty-eighth percentile rank. So we did see that from our ninth graders. And if you see our current chart, our ninth graders had the most growth in the district. And we attribute that to the usage of IXL. And we also attribute that to the low class, uh, size numbers, uh, twenty to one. So we did do some, some, um, take some initiatives i- in that grade that I think, uh, really kind of had a nice uptick for them.
Start with, uh, Mr. Nguyen.
I see some, I don't know if it's a discrepancy or not, but you know, we have a total of what, three thousand nine hundred ninety-eight students? But when I add those nine, ten, eleven grade, they have a thousand students missing. So what's the problem? Is there a discrepancy or something been left out or what?
No, we only test the IM one, two and three students. So not, this does not include like all the ninth, tenth and eleventh graders in our, in our district.
Okay. So the, the three thousand nine hundred ninety-eight, that mean they've been assessed, they have math rich growth score that, you know, on, on January thirty-first that you release. But this one, you're only at nine, ten, eleven, so because you only test nine, ten, eleven, right? Do you have test, uh, procedure now?
We tested IM one, two and three. And then you also have to take into consideration if a student did not take a test in the, in the fall or didn't take a test in the winter, then we don't have any growth data for that student. We might, we just have one test event. We don't have any growth data. So we can't really show any growth here.
Okay. Okay, that's it.
Doctor Guzman?
Yes, um, thank you for, uh, the information you provided so far, Doctor, our, Mr. Sanchez. One, uh, going back to, um, I had actually two questions. One, going back to the, uh, growth quadrant for all students and then compared to the ninth grade, um, only, um, you know, we're looking at like, for example, Arroyo High School, uh, for ninth graders, sixty percentile rank with, uh, sixty-eight, um, uh, growth, right?
Yes.
And so you look at overall, all Aurora High School students, sixty-two, sixty-eight, very similar, um, you know, ninth grade versus, um, all students. I, I think for me, it, it's not so much, you know, kudos absolutely that, uh, Aurora High School as a, as a school overall did so well. But looking at the, the ninth graders and what they're coming in with, um, to me screams of success, beget success, right? Success, um, builds on success. And so if you're already coming in, um, at a really high level, and you're growing a lot from the very beginning, the expectation is that you're going to continue to grow. Um, and so I'm not surprised, um, it's in line and what's expected, like let's say from Aurora High School. I absolutely appreciate and applaud the work that everybody's doing there. But I think where I'm most concerned is, um, on the other end of the spectrum, um, where they're coming in really low overall. And yes, they're growing. But I think my question is, I know we talk about, um, equity as a, as a aspirational goal for the district, right? But how is that being implemented in practice here? Because it's a clear case to me that this is a need for equity in terms of how much attention and intervention and supporting resources given to South Elmani, Mountain View. Uh, because the ninth graders are coming in much lower and the growth and the percentile rank, it tracks very similarly um, from the ninth graders compared to all of them. Um, so to me, it, it screams of equity in, in terms of how we're focusing on one school versus the other to make sure that, um, if Mountain View starts off much lower, um, as ninth graders that we're helping them, you know, um, yes, I love that they're growing, but they're still growing, um, even with the growth that, let's say, Mountain View has a fifty-ninth percent, or growth, uh, percentage. They're still very low percentile rank, right? Even with the growth. And so I think my question to the team is how are we in a practical manner, making sure that we're directing more resources, more equitable, um, support to these schools that are starting off with low ninth graders to begin with?
Um, I think, uh, you know, speaking to a school like Mountain View, um, they, they have the biggest challenge in the district. And yet they had some of the highest growth, um, in the district, you know, so that, that is, uh, kind of speaks to kind of the work that's already happening um, at Mountain View High School, not just from the support that we give them, but just internally. I know Mr. Banyas has been doing a lot of work with that group. They adopted a sixty-thirty model where they're providing their own intervention in the classroom. So, there's already a lot of things-
Mr. Sanchez, talk about the sixty-thirty. That's the answer to his question. He's, that is, that's what he's asking.
Yes, so-
What is sixty-thirty?
So the sixty-thirty model, Mountain View acknowledged like, hey, our kids are coming in really low. So what they're doing is they're dedicating, and it's flexible, right? It's not always exactly thirty minutes, but they're devoting a specific amount of time at the end of their lesson or at the beginning of their lesson to provide some intervention material for students, the skills that are at their level, right? So that they're able to make connections to what they're going to be learning in that lesson for that day. So they have a specific time designated just to, let's work on whatever basic skills we need to work on today so that we're able to access and connect to the current curriculum. So I think that has been a huge kind of tool that they've used and that's played a big role into why they have so much growth.
Yeah. Dr. McGuinness?
In addition, and with, in partnership with Kethlin and Science, one of the things that she's helped us develop is a system of goal setting. And so the team goes to the site and meets with the leadership team, math leaders, instructional coach. And they're unpacking this data and they're making some goals that are specific to the sites. That's different. We've never done anything like that in the past. Wow. Audio just increased. And so we're excited about that. This is, like I said, a relatively new process and so what we're able to do now is to take a look at what are the specific contextual needs at a site to say, "Let's develop this intervention model. Let's look at this set of resources that are available. Maybe there's instructional assistance or math tutor labs, that might be something different. Maybe we connect with the Avid Resources in a different way at this site than we would at this site." So that's something that we're in development of, but the process is there in place where we're sitting down together. We're looking at data, we're making some goals and reflecting on what we have in place. Hopefully that helps.
Absolutely, absolutely, I appreciate it. And I look forward to next year's full data for comparison. But I had a secondary separate question. I know we're getting by schools, we're getting it by grade. Are we able to drill down a little bit more in terms of data desegregation? To see really within group differences at the high schools or within group differences between the ninth graders? What other filters, for lack of a better word, do we have or are available to us to really do data desegregation? And I think to Dr. McGuinness' point of really tailoring to subsets of populations within, you know, the within group differences.
And just real quickly to touch back on the previous question that you've had, talking about equity. I think that's why we did the prioritization of the standards. We want to make sure that all the schools in our district are, have access to the same exact standards, that one school's not being left out and that we're all in this community working on the same curriculum, looking at the same data, looking at the same assessments and then making data-driven decisions. So that's how we're trying to be equitable across the board. And then speaking to that question, we can really go pretty deep with this data and if you would like for us to go kind of, we're doing very macro. If you want to go micro, I would recommend doing a possible board study session. That could be a great opportunity for us to really go deep into the data and really look at all the things that you're interested in.
The ethnicities.
We can do that, yes.
Because that's where we're going to and we've asked for that, you know, Dr., Mr. Nguyen has asked for that and that's where we've seen the disparity over the years between Asians and Latinos and that's where it gets uncomfortable and you don't want to talk about it. But if you don't lean into the discomfort and talk about it, nothing's going to change. I don't know if Mr., if Dr. Guzman was saying, like, are you saying like, do we have more tutors? Because they're already starting low at Mountain View, right? Did you mean like, do we have more tutors there than we do at Rosemead and Arroyo? And should we have more tutors there or should we have like more resources to address more needs there? Because we already know that they're low, is that, was that your question?
Well, yeah, that goes to the heart of the equity piece, right? And I think that's, that's something that was slightly answered and I think they're working on identifying based on the conversations, right? The collaboration of what other unique needs within these schools in order, because I think it's great the growth, but I also want the percentile rank-
Yes.
Where the expectation across all schools is the same, which is equally high. In this case, Arroyo High School is setting the bar. But to me, it's not the high bar, that's the minimum bar. That's where we all want to, for all the schools to be at. And so I think, yeah, to Mr. Pardilla's point, reiterate the point of equity. And so, yes, and I think it goes to the other point of besides the ethnicity, right? Gender, right? Are male students, are cisgender male students, you know, falling behind or starting lower versus our other, you know, our cisgender female students? Or, you know, are there other differences that we can pull out to really understand what contextual factors are negatively impacting them? Either as ninth graders or throughout? So yeah, if we can, I know Mr. Nguyen was, he's been a big advocate of the, you know, this issue and so I would love for, obviously that could be a request at the end, but a study session sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, we would love to do that, that would be great, we can really get into the data.
I think with the assessment, our district is finally, it's the whole, you know, equality versus equity. I think we finally got equality when it came to an assessment piece or a tool. We're now all using the same thing. The equity part now is like giving everybody what they need and I think that's where we're heading to, like, for you guys to make their requests, like, hey, this school needs more than Arroyo needs in order to attain that equality, you know what I mean? And a question that, you have another question? I had a question, Mr. Breones. Go ahead.
For Dr. Galvez.
I have some really big concerns that our focus is always around ethnicity or gender. A teaching strategy is a teaching strategy. So like whether I'm a Mexican girl or I'm an Asian girl or an Asian boy, a teaching strategy is a teaching strategy. And so if we're using the same strategies for students who maybe come from a very impoverished background or a student struggling with mental health services, like we keep putting this like grand emphasis on something that I just don't understand why that's our emphasis. Like, I think good practice, good teaching strategies, making sure that we're providing students with the resources, looking at things like, does that kid have internet at home to make sure that they can access the IXL program? Making sure to look at, I think when we're talking about usage, this is really cool where we see the growth with district-wide, what all the schools did. But I kind of want to see the growth between, or the usage rates between Arroyo High School, Rosemead and South Almani, because that's where the disparity lies. But this like extreme focus on gender and race, I think does not, to me, that's more going against DEI than it is being like equitable. But I do think, okay, hey, maybe we need to pair up the South Almani math team with the Royal math team, do some PD there, what are we doing, what are we doing differently, right? And we also too need to recognize that our kids are coming in with a very different disparity. So if you go to the chart with the ninth graders, if you look at South Almani and Mountain View, Mountain View is doing excellent because they were able to get probably a lot of that thirty-eight percent that was in red and that low nine percent and five percent, that must have moved over quite a bit. So what's Mountain View doing? Because Mountain View and South Almani, I'm like a little certain have similar demographics. Because I do think it would be unfair to compare South Almani to like Arroyo, right? But Mountain View and South, I would be a little bit more comfortable doing that and they both are on block schedule because I know that is a point of contention. So what is Mountain View doing with their math time during their block schedule that South Almani is not? So that might actually be a really good like pairing there.
Yeah, definitely. So, and we are looking into part of the, you know, data analysis that we're doing and the data that this test gives us. It allows us to see which classrooms had the most growth, which ones haven't. And part of the practice that we did is we shared strategies during our NWA trainings. Why did your class grow so much as compared to mine? And it wasn't anything like a gotcha, it was just, let's look at our classrooms, let's see, what's working for you, what's working for you? You had really high growth in your class, what are you doing that might be different than what I'm doing? And I know we're going to be talking about some next steps. Part of some next steps is looking at like those teachers who had really high growth and taking those best practices and sharing them out with the rest of the district. And we'll talk about more of that as we look into next steps. The next slide I want to show you and I'll leave this to Ms. Science to explain because this is really going to explain the quadrant chart that we've been looking at in the, in the past couple of slides and really put a bigger picture, perspective on where we're trying to go and why we celebrate so much that we have our students in this orange section, which, hey, the data's the data, if they're, they're low achieving, that's what it is. But the goal is to get them out of there. So Ms. Science will be talking about how we're going to do that.
Good evening. Board members and new board members, nice meeting you. I will start, I try to explain to the teachers especially when, you know, they bring a lot of challenges, a lot of real challenges. So low, but they want what you want, which is for them to be accelerated yesterday. And that's really how they feel and they have to still give them a good grade at the end, even though they're not at a great level. And so I wanted to contextualize for them and for you, and I've been sharing this with as many people as I can, when a student or a school is on that orange quadrant, what it really means and the work that you really want to think about moving forward. A lot of the times when you're doing math initiatives or any initiative is like, we want the results really quickly and then we see something not working right away, we want to sometimes eliminate. And so it's really important that you keep this continuous improvement effort and that you're tweaking things even when they don't look like they're working right away instead of getting rid of them completely. And this is why. So if you think about the ninth grader and I took sixty percent of your ninth graders, which are in that quantile distribution that you saw, were low or low achieving. So the yellows and the oranges and the reds. That's about four thousand of your students. Sorry, yes, about, not four thousand, it was about actually sixty percent of that four thousand. Sixty percent of your students are coming average to low achieving. I took their median RIT score and their median RIT score was at two eighteen. That's, they're going to be a red. And that's like a fifth grader at grade level. Now that median means that half of those students, half of that cohort of kids, that sixty percent are below that and half are higher. And so usually if that student's doing really well and growing in the way that we want them to grow, they're getting interventions and they're getting really high quality instruction and all the evidence-based, you know, John Hattie's best practices, let's just assume they're getting all of it, they're going to still be on red, but they're going to have really high growth. That growth's going to be on the green. What's going to happen is the next year, you know, if they accelerate their learning, this means they accelerated the learning. And let me just explain why this is important, because meeting the goal just maintains achievement. I say this to everybody because a lot of times we celebrate kids who meet their goal. Meeting goals is just maintaining achievement, it doesn't change achievement. So if this ninth grader continues just meeting their goal, they're just going to be green, I mean, red, the whole time. So this student accelerated, they're over there on the orange and we asked teachers to identify, everybody had a student. Everybody had a student that was in that orange. And they were able to text the parents, send a message of like, you know, sharing how proud they were because they had that growth. Well, they say they grew about two years worth of learning and they have that SGP or higher. And so what we want is they're going to be in tenth grade, but they're still going to show red. And the teachers were really sad about this. They were like, well, what do you mean? I worked so hard, my kid accelerated and I'm still not going to see it. And they're like, no, because the work is not just a ninth grade teacher. The work is between the ninth grade teacher with the tenth grade teacher with the eleventh grade. It has to be cohesive and it has to be long-term and you will see the increased achievement. So what's going to happen, of course, the student grows a little bit, a lot actually, and they're now like a seventh grader, you know? They were not three years behind, now they're maybe two years behind. And if you continue accelerating the student, they'll eventually be like a ninth grade student. You see the movement, moving from the orange quadrant to the green quadrant. And we talked about too, that we have high achieving students who have low growth, that if we don't monitor and we don't reverse that, they're going to eventually move to the, to the left. And we don't want that. And so I just wanted to contextualize that because I see teachers who are doing a lot of hard work. They have a big challenge in front of them. They're trying to figure out how to do interventions correctly. We're trying to figure out what is really evidence-based practice that are going to work. So this is a moment of exploration, of finding like the good nuggets and making sure we're replicating those practices as much as possible. But it is going to take time. And I wanted to, so that next year when you see everyone moving and you see more people in that orange quadrant, you, you know, you have the stamina to not just say, to keep things going and fine tuning and not just say, well, that IXL thing didn't work, we're going to take it out. Or that math lab didn't work, we're going to take it out, right? It's important that you let things kind of fine tune themselves with this data now that you have. So I'll leave it there if anybody has any questions about the data prior and what I see. But we've been talking to the teachers, the parents have been seeing this. You know, and so it's really amazing to just really tell you to be brave and to, you know, just keep pushing forward even when things don't work out. We had a parent meeting and we only had two, three parents in one meeting. We did a role-playing with that parent, with their data. And, you know, a lot of the parents couldn't come in because of the situation, they were afraid to come in and we're finding ways and, you know, the first thing I said like, don't worry, if two, three parents came, those three parents, we're going to find another way to get more parents in, we're going to find another way to motivate the teachers, to empower them. That's really the work that we need to be doing and we're heading in that direction slowly but surely, in that way.
In this district, we've been, that for our achievement by kids. Could have had to look at to address a need. In this district, we've been dinged on achievement of our achievement. That's why we speak to them. There's history here, there's experience here. They're after eleven years. Kind of work under and assistant services. And the boss to like four superintendents. I know a little bit about curriculum and instruction. So as a Latino board member, I am not going to stay quiet about the test scores of Latino kids here or in a neighboring district, which is why this whole initiative of making A-plus adjustments to history got started. Because of the inequities in an Asian district like Rosemeat where that superintendent didn't, didn't give a rat's ass about Latino test scores, math test scores over there. And now there's a superintendent that does. And if nobody ever talks about it, because it gets a little uncomfortable, you know, got accused of being racist because I said that, I'm not okay with the status quo of the test scores for Latino kids. So, you know, that's why we have to look and dissegregate the data. And yeah, if it's the same teaching strategies that you're using throughout the district and it's not working on Latino kids, then change the strategy because it's not working. Do something else. That's why it's called making A-plus adjustments. And those are some of the adjustments that we need to identify at different schools to increase achievement. We can't pretend like, oh, don't look at them because they're Latino or they're girls. We have to look at that because that's where the disparities are and that's what the data tells us. Data's not good, data's not bad, data is the data. And so in education, we always say this beautiful saying, let's make data-driven decisions. Well, if your test scores suck for Latino kids in math, look at what we're doing for Latino kids and dissegregate the data. Because I know when you mesh the numbers, Dr. Quinn, Dr. I know when you mesh the numbers, Dr. Quinn, Dr. Mr. Nguyen, he's a math expert, highest level math here from all of us, okay? Retired in his profession. You can hide all those kids, just like we do in English Language Arts with English language learners. When you mix those kids with the, with the regular kids, the data comes out different. Pull out those English language learners, you can see that their test scores are low too. So we need to have that discussion about ethnicity, even if it makes you feel uncomfortable, if you don't like it, that is the reality.
I think what we, what you have is if you have this continuous improvement plan, that you make sure that you cut, you're more like a universally designed to make sure nobody falls behind. And so I think the message that I want to leave you with is like, I understand how it is for you who are accountable for achievement. But I've seen, and I've been with a lot of schools and a lot of networks, who are so desperate to get that achievement in one year, that then lose sight of the long-term plan that is going to eventually get you there. And so I think that's, you know, what I'm saying, like, yes, and as long as you see that the kids are, if kids are growing two years' worth of learning, your teachers deserve the medal, and those kids in those classes deserve a medal, because that's not easy to do. And we saw that. And I think I was having, I was telling the teachers, I think I was having the party by myself in my, you know, soul, because I don't think everybody understood the math here. And this is really, really important. So whenever I saw a teacher with all these kids there, I'm like, celebrate your kids. This is amazing. What is happening? What are you doing with those students that's working for them? Why are these other students not, because everybody also had students that dropped, right? And then the conversation opens, and then we start thinking about how to make it equitable for all, because we want everyone to grow.
So what you're telling us is stick with the plan. Don't just like, oh, it didn't work the first year, get rid of it, and then let's do something else, which is what many districts do. You're saying stick with it.
Stick with it for a while. Even when I see, you know, South El Monte teachers are, they are so ready to work, they're so ready to roll up their sleeves, and they see something like that, maybe they tried something, you know, from fall to winter. Now they're, when they met with us, they were talking about what they were going to commit to, to do different from the winter. And you want to allow that, like, that fine tuning, that trial and error, and sometimes it's not going to come out pretty. But we're talking about like, short periods of time. Long-term, we should be seeing improvement. And then maybe they're going to be able to say, we need this support themselves too. They're going to ask for the support as well, because they'll know what they need. And, you know, sometimes even more than we know. But they, hopefully they'll speak up and they'll say what they also need. I don't know if you have any more questions about this?
Mr. Briana, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Nguyen.
Okay. You know, I don't like to bring the race into this. We just try to create an equitable system. So no matter black, white, yellow, orange, whatever, you come in, you get help with the same thing. That's my, that's my main focus on it. You know, when I talked to the previous superintendent from La Vialindo, Ms. Bouchard, oh, you have to hire a best chef, you know, to make the best plate, you know, dish, to serve your customer. What happened? All your ingredients are stale and rotten. How are you going to do that? How are you going to make the best dish, you know, if you, you know, even though you're a best chef? So very important. There's, there's all the variables involved. I know the teacher working very hard. I have empathy for them, but I see them working hard. When they sign up, you know, to make a difference in the world, and they make a difference in my life. And that's why, you know, but the thing is, there's so much inequity from, that's why you see me advocated from very beginning, from elementary school district, and knock on their door, and knock on their school, just to back them to work with us so we can work together to create an equitable system. So when they come into us, they are ready to move on, to achieve things. You know, all of our board member here is a former alumni of the school district. They just reflect on their experience in high school, and reflect your journey from high school to your college, to where you are right now. And you can see, you know, what we're doing here is, you know, is very meaningful. That's what I wanted to tell you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I just want to say thank you to trustee Nguyen for validating everything I just said about how it doesn't matter what race is, that we should be focused on quality teaching. So thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
You can continue.
Thank you. So one of the things that we haven't done in this district before is these very deep data dives with all stakeholders, not just students, not just teachers, but parents as well, and leaders. So we got an opportunity to share the data with them, school side data and district-wide data, set new goals, and also look at what's working, what's not working, and as well do some celebrations. We did a lot of celebrating with our kids, which I'll show you in just a minute, with our teachers as well, and even with our parents. So again, things we haven't done before, right? We're trying to increase that level of commitment from all our stakeholders, so that this becomes a culture, not, not just something that fizzles out. This is some data we collected from our students. One of the questions they had to fill out in their goal-setting survey was, what helped you improve your RIT score? And this is some of the responses that we got from our students. Again, all of our teachers are goal-setting with their students in the classroom. There's a goal-setting form that they have to fill out and answer basic questions like, what was your RIT score? Did you improve? Did you not improve? If you improved, what worked? If you did not improve your RIT score, what do you think caused that? So they're doing a lot of self-reflection, and part of this is helping students take ownership of their learning, right? We want them to be active participants in this process with us, so that they become, you know, lifelong learners. They, and we promote this culture of growth mindset and culture of continuous improvement. We did the similar process with teachers. We asked them, what worked for you? What will you continue to do? What were some of the, the students who improved the most, which ones didn't? Why do you think the students who grew or improved their RIT scores, what do you think, why do you think caused that? What do you think are some areas that, or something that you would like to do different going into the spring semester? What's something that you would like to do the same? And this is just some kind of feedback that we got from our teachers. Lastly, our parents, right? We are a team. We cannot do this without them. This is a team effort. And if it's not important to the teachers, the leaders, the parents, then it's not going to be important to the students. So we want to make sure we're bringing in all stakeholders in this process together, so that we can work as a team collaboratively. It's not just the sole job of the math teacher to increase math achievement in the district. It is all of us together as a team. And now Dr. McGuinness will speak to the work being done at COWS.
So I just wanted to, and I, you asked a question earlier, Mr. Nguyen, and I, and I wanted to just pause and just give a little bit of an update on the work that we've been doing in COWS, as that is an evidence of this continued commitment that we have in this vertical articulation and alignment with our partner districts. Again, this is not something that we are doing to our teachers, or to our students, or to our feeder districts. It's something that we're in partnership with. And that trust takes time to build, and we're building that in every step of the way. You know, one of the things that I'm really proud of the work that we've been doing this year around the priority standards is really embedded in the work that we have been doing with our I Am One, Two, and Three teachers. But the connection with having our feeder school districts, the teachers that are currently teaching I Am One, that's the same curriculum that we're teaching in our, in our, in our classrooms. So we need to be in alignment and have clear understanding about what those priority standards are. So having them sit at the table in this room with us is just another example of how strong those bonds are becoming. And they're committing to taking those standards, the work that they did with their, with their Integrative Math One teachers in eighth grade, and working that backwards, so that we have this, this vertical alignment and commitment to these standards that we've identified as priorities. So the COWS, just some quick facts. We have scheduled three, seven, wow, it didn't come out really well. We have seven scheduled meetings throughout the year. There are five of the districts. We rotate who's going to play host, and we co-create the agendas. And we're, this, this is really focused on, this graphic down on the left is this, this is a systems thinking. So we're identifying the problem, we're developing a theory or a plan of action, we're test, we're implementing it, we're testing it. And so that improvement science model is also illustrated. This is one of the samples that our teams have been working on this year by focusing on math, identifying a problem of practice, and something that we as a, as a collective can commit to working toward collectively, that we know is going to be an impact for our students in math. So in fact, we have a COWS meeting coming up this Friday that we're excited about continuing to deepen this work. And the next step is to now, after we've identified these aims and these goals, is to outline what are those action plans. And they're going to look different from district to district. El Monte City District plans might look a little bit different than Roseme plans, and that's absolutely fine, as long as we're in the same room, having the conversations, and we have the same goal in mind, which I am confident that we do now. So hoping that helps explain some of that work that we've been doing specifically in collaboration around with math.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Dr. Guzman.
I love this slide. Absolutely love it. This is exactly what's needed. And we all know the vertical alignment is so important. But I really, I'm a huge supporter of systems thinking and systems approach, they're a whole and the parts, and looking at the, at the complexity of all of this. So I think that to see this as, as the work that's already happening, I'm really, really thrilled, because this is really how, this is really a comprehensive way of looking at, at very complex issues, right? And so I think the real comment that I want to give is, please let us know if there's anything else that we as a board, or I as a board member can do to support this work, because it's absolutely where we should be going. And this is the only way to really address some of the longstanding, very ingrained issues that precede students being here at the district. And so I'm just excited to see that this work is already going on.
A quick answer is to continue to support Dr. Zuniga in, in this leadership capacity. You know, each district comes to it with, through a different, and looking through it through a different lens. But I think one of the things that elevated is when, when one of the assistant superintendents in El Monte City stood up and said out loud to everybody, look, everybody, our success in the elementary school districts means their success there.
Yes.
We all, we all kind of were knowing that and thinking that. But to have them saying that and owning it, and, and, yeah, owning that responsibility was, was a really important step. And so continuing to help support, just through your advocacy and, and, and support of this process, I think is a really important piece.
Dr. McGuinness, if I may make, make a request.
Yes.
I'm really glad that you mentioned that anecdote, because when I go and visit the feeder districts, you know, at a board meeting, or if I happen to be invited to an event, I have the opportunity to speak to any of the staff or the parents. That is literally one of the things that I always share. Your success is our success. And in that moment, you know, it may not necessarily mean a whole lot to some people, but I think in this case, when you have a group of administrators together working on, on, you know, on a problem, and to have somebody vocalize it, and understand that they're not the only person that thinks that way, but just to, just to know that somebody is vocalizing it and making it clear that that is what we're all working towards, that means a lot. And so if I could just make one request, when you have your next COWS meeting, please let that administrator know that I appreciate that. Not only that that's their mindset, but also that they were able to articulate it very clearly to everyone, because it does mean a lot. As we often share, we are not a unified school district here, and it does present a lot of challenges. But I'm happy to know that we are working hand in hand with, excuse me, with our partners at our four feeder districts. And that one simple understanding that their success is our success, that carries a significant amount of weight. So I want to say thank you, and please share my thanks with that individual. You know, you don't have to identify them, you don't have to say anything beyond, when my board member said thank you, because it is very much appreciated.
If I could comment on that, and thank you for sharing that, that, that support system in place where the board members can go and have dialogue and discussion with their other colleagues, fellow board members too. It's a strong support system when we're able to continue the work in the summer, for example, where we have an alignment of professional development opportunities, where Monte School District or Roseme School District can offer professional development sessions alongside our teachers. So that, now we're getting down to an integrative, we're having teachers on teacher alignment. So if there's a support system where you can encourage and support, because we don't see a lot of opportunities sometimes at elementary school districts offering some type of summer workshops, that we'd like to see more often, that we're happy to host and provide that, that's a win-win for everybody as well, and including the teachers at the elementary and middle schools too. I think they're hungry for that, but sometimes there's no opportunities for that from their, from their school districts too. So that's one thing. COWS has shifted into a culture where it's now centered into one standardized focus, meaning that in the past, COWS had different topics every time we met. We had a special education topic, we had a science topic, we had a eighth grade transition to high school topic. And people would go, forget, move on. So now, kudos to the team of all the assistant superintendents coordinating the agenda. It's an obligation, and also it's really a shared decision-making that we're all doing to support the math initiative. And though we have our disagreements, and we have our, you know, non-negotiables, that we want to, you know, have this centered focus, I think that it's been successful in the sense that we've managed to keep five districts together to focus on one topic like math. And though we are not in the classroom, we are not teaching, we're learning alongside our teachers too, about how to be leaders on campus to implement these assessments, to advocate for math initiatives from the elementary school to the middle school, to the eighth grade, to the, to the actual high school transition too. So I do want to extend that congratulations to Dr. Rivas, who is really the primary leader of COWS alongside, you know, her colleagues too, in driving that focus, that cultural shift too. And we move slow, but we also keep in mind that we have a lot of new educators and leaders in new positions. We have a lot of shifting at El Monte City School District with principals moving, they're starting a new school, they're learning about their teachers. So there's a lot of adaptation that we're trying to accomplish at the same time with managing five school districts too. So I do want to thank the board for allowing us to do that, and appreciate the time for us to do that. But I think the best solution was to focus on one topic and not go away from it. Now, our goal is to continue that path until we get to a point where we're saying we're comfortable, and not focus on science, or focus on something more relevant at the time. But right now, we're going to finish off the year focusing on math, and we'll go from there. So I just wanted to share that information for you guys.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. One thing I will say, and as I shared earlier, when we're talking about the language that we use, you mentioned that, you know, the, the COWS meetings, they move slow. I would argue that you're deliberative, because it's by design. You know, you want to make sure that you're being very intentional with what you're doing, and how you're attempting to accomplish those goals. Again, not a knock on anybody, but definitely we want to be mindful of the language that we're using. Just like here, our intent is to obviously improve student achievement, and we are most definitely a deliberative body that, yes, by design moves slow, because we don't want to break things either. We want to make sure that we are intentional with what we're, we're doing and how we're accomplishing it. But again, thank you for, for sharing that information. And, and it does speak to the challenges that we face, not only as a district here at El Monte Union, but as a community as a whole, having five districts. It's difficult enough to have five people come to an agreement sometimes. They have five different institutions, we have five different philosophies or ideologies in some cases. That is a challenge in and of itself. But thank you for, for your comments, and obviously your hard work in coordinating these meetings with our feeder districts.
Mr. President?
I'm going to have Dr. McGuinness, or finish your, your presentation or the slide.
I want to speak prior to that, because it's on this.
Well, let me, let me have him finish this slide, and then I'll go back to you.
I'm actually finished with this slide, I was about ready to transition to the next one.
So then we'll go to Mr. Padilla.
There you go. So I, I love the comment, you know, Mr. Dr. Guzman said, this is my favorite slide. You know, I am just beaming from side to side in my mouth, because it's been painstaking work to get to this point. You know, I've been here since we started this. It's been a war. You know, you had to say stuff that made people feel uncomfortable, you know, and I'll, I'll bring back when I had the teacher of the year stand there, you know, from a royal high school and say, and I asked, how's the assessment going? And then she said, oh, you mean the assessment that you forced on us? And I had to pause. And I said, yes, I want to know how the assessment is going, the one that we forced on you. Well, today you, you brought the information that it has been good, you know? But I say that story because that's how tense it was when we brought this uniformed assessment to the district. When Mr. Briana says, go back and tell that administrator, yeah. When Mr. Breon says, "Go back and tell that administrator," yeah, that's called leaning into the discomfort. It's saying things that nobody else wants to say, because it's like uncomfortable, I'm sure it was uncomfortable for that assistant super. And yet, COWS used to be a joke, and I don't mince my words. It used to be a joke. How do I know? Because I've been here for 32 years, and many of my friends are principals, and they will tell me, "Yeah, when we go to those meetings, it's just we're all over the place, and everybody just wants to show their, you know, show their best face, nobody wants to be vulnerable." Because districts don't want to be vulnerable, the Violendo School District doesn't, the Mountview School District doesn't, El Monte City doesn't, Rosemead doesn't. But now we're getting to the vulnerability part, where everybody's okay with, you know, being naked and putting your dirty stuff out there, where superintendents would sometimes not be comfortable and feel like, "Well, I don't want to tell them how horrible my test scores are." Well, now we've all agreed, like, your success is our success. Yes, your horrible test scores, we got to have that discussion. And that's what I call Brene Brown's leaning into the discomfort and being vulnerable, because if you're never vulnerable, you're never going to solve your problem. And I think that's what you guys have gotten to with all the relationships that we've built. And so, I applaud you. I also want to say, you know, we looked at that quadrant, low achievement for Mountview School District, and then high growth, that's another school district. All of the Mountview School District, the majority of the Mountview School District eighth graders go to Mountain View, right? They do go to Rio Hondo Math Academy, don't their eighth graders go there? Or am I wrong? Seventh or eighth grade? There's a little reason of why it might be, you know, low achievement, you know, high growth, you know? It'd be interesting to look at that.
I have a comment, President Breonis.
Go ahead, Mr. Nguyen.
Okay, you know, you left that one thing, you know, the feeder school district success is our success, but our success also Rio Hondo and PCC's success. See, that's a domino effect.
True.
You know, they're college, they want their students to graduate on time, you know, clocked up their system, and you know, so that's why they come over here. We need their support, we need, we work together as a unit. If you left the vow, see, on the beginning, the culture, you say, "Math Academy," that's what they're here for. And that's why I tried, I even talked to the new superintendent, if PCC, because Rosemead under jurisdiction of PCC, I say, if PC, you know, in business, PCC have first right refusal. If they cannot do it, they have to go to Rio Hondo. Serve your kid. I specifically direct them to go to Rio Hondo.
But Mr. Nguyen, people think you're crazy, because you're a board member that goes to another school district to go try to talk to them. Why do you do that? That's never done, you're not supposed to do that. Why the hell do you do that? Why do you go and visit the Mountview School District? Why do you go to the Violendo School District? Why do you go to Rosemead School District? Why don't you just worry about your district? Board members don't do that, what do you say to that?
Our student is my boss. That's what I signed up for, and they are my only boss, and they are not served equitably. And that's why, you know, we can, from the beginning of my boardmanship, I already told you, status quo is no longer acceptable, as long as I am on the board. Otherwise, we're throwing the towel. I'm here not for fame, not for fortune, I'm here for the kid. I live in this community for 47 years, I've seen enough, to be honest with you, because I volunteer in elementary school, I tutor El Monte City Schools District, people just keep move on, move on, and same old, same old. It never happened. This is a historic moment over here at El Monte Union High School District, and I'm very glad, I'm very glad it's happening, because it never happened before. We went through a lot of agony, a lot of pain, yes, a lot of sacrifice, yes, but for the good of our students. But what, before I slip, you know, I say, you have middle school math placement form updated, what do you mean by that? Could you elaborate on that?
Sure.
Is that assessment, or just the flowchart you have to go through?
It's the tool that we use when we are doing pre-registration meetings with our eighth graders. We get teacher recommendations. That form was a, it just needed a revise, a revision, and so we, Alex worked really closely with teachers and our counselors, and got some feedback, I got some feedback from folks at COWS, and we revised that form, so it just works a little bit more fluidly. So not placement tests necessarily, but teacher recommendation.
Okay, thank you, that's it, that's all the question I have.
Okay, what's next? And then we'll wrap up with the last couple of slides.
We're almost there, folks, almost there. So, what's next? Coming into the spring, we're going to give the NWE assessment again. The window will be open from April 28th through May 16th. Now that we have all this data from teachers, and which classrooms are showing tremendous growth, and again, we have a lot of expertise that's happening at all schools, including the ones that grew a lot and the ones that didn't, there's some teachers who are doing some great things, and we want to do some math walkthroughs to their classes, we want to learn what they're doing, what are their best practices that are really supporting all their students, and share that with the rest of the district. We plan on sharing that by doing inquiry cycles and lesson studies, I'm kind of speaking to what Dr. Galaviso was mentioning, we want to leverage our inside expertise and have us teachers collaborating and learning from each other, what's working for them. And then again, looking at data and celebrating. We are also just finished our common assessment pacing, we did our common assessments. Now, we just most recently finished this month, our I Am 1, 2, and 3 pacings for the And then, also, we've been in discussions about how we're going to make sure that all the information that we created, or all the materials that we created during our priority standards work, gets shared with the rest of the math teachers in the district, since not all of them were able to participate, we want to make sure they all receive training, and that they all have access to all the standards and all the curriculum and all the coursework. Looking at the summer, we are going to have a week-long collaboration to develop lessons, formative assessments, teaching tools that we're going to use to implement the new priority standards in the fall. We also have a partnership with Rio Hondo Math Academy, we're going to be rolling out the Rio Hondo Math Academy for the very first time in our district this summer. What's really cool about the Rio Hondo Math Academy is that they were able to create summer school workbooks using our priority standards. So they're already creating materials with our priority standards in mind to share with all of our students this summer. So that's awesome, and everyone's going to get a workbook. We also updated the I Am Readiness course to be changed to a credit, no credit, we don't want students who take this course, this elective course, to get an F and have that already affect their transcripts when they come in the fall as a freshman. So those are some changes coming. And then looking into the fall of 2026, we have, again, lesson study and inquiry cycles, I mean, really have to kind of tackle the elephant in the room, right, which is the classroom, what's being taught in the classroom, and improve some of those teaching practices. We have a textbook adoption process in the wing, we have to start looking at how we're going to go about piloting new course, new coursework, and we're going to implement those priority standards in the fall. And again, go through our cycle of continuous improvement, our growth mindset cycle, we're going to look at data, make adjustments, make plans, and rinse and repeat every single fall, winter, and spring, that's the goal, and create this cycle of continuous improvement.
One correction.
Yes.
It says fall 2026, I assume you mean fall 2025?
Yes, that was a typo, oops, thank you for catching that.
We're thinking next school year, but it's not next calendar year.
Yeah, right, yeah, then it would be winter 2026, yeah, we missed that, okay. Yes.
Gotcha. Just so we're clear.
Right. Man, how did we miss that?
I mean, don't give me any kudos, I saw this presentation yesterday, and I didn't catch it until now, so.
Yeah, it's a lot. Okay, so one of the things I want to talk about is the implementation dip, and I think we kind of already touched bases on this, I mean, this is that learning curve that we're talking about, right, that can maybe bring frustrations when we don't see results right away or immediately. So we want to make sure we're cognizant of it, and that anytime we bring in a new initiative to a district, especially this size, there's going to be a dip, we might not be able to see the achievement and growth that we want right away. But if we celebrate, if we stick with the path, make adjustments, and see the process through, that'll eliminate how long we end up staying in that dip. So our goal really is to reduce that dip by, again, goal-setting, celebrating growth, and again, making adjustments, tweaks, and sticking with the plan.
I have a comment.
Yes.
Go ahead, Dr. Guzman.
I know, it was mentioned earlier, the implementation dip, and Catalina you said to stick with it, and absolutely, that's why earlier, one of my comments was, I can't wait to see, you know, the assessments for next year. I do want to be mindful, though, that, and I want to press, impress this on all of you and Dr. Zuniga, that not everything is, not every implementation dip ends up being resolved. There's sometimes where programs are, need to just, we need to cut our losses, right?
Yeah.
And so, I think that's a fine line of, and so, all that to say that, I want, it sounds like it, and obviously, we're going to all, the continuous improvement model that we're working on, but I want to make sure that there's sufficient quality training, and I know you spoke to that, adequate resourcing, resources, and tailoring when needed, because the implementation, the foundation is really going to determine the success of this. And so, if at any point, it does seem like this is something that, as good as it sounds, as successful as it's been in other districts, if it's not working, you know, we need to know.
You'll hear from me first.
Because ultimately, the teachers are the ones that are going to be left holding the bag, right? They're going to be trying to make something work that is not working for our district, and for them and the students to bear the brunt of something that's not a good fit for our program, for our district, would not be fair. And so, I'm all for, you know, and I understand there's the implementation dip, and there's ways to reduce the length and scope of it, and all that good stuff, but I do want to impress that if something is not working, or does not seem like it's a good fit, we need to know, so we can reevaluate, and if we need to cut ties and cut our losses, we need to do that, because it's not fair to subject students and teachers to something that is clearly not going to work. Not that that's the case, but I do want to impress that I know there's going to be an implementation dip, and it is a fine line between when is it just the dip, and when is this not a good fit for our district.
Sure, definitely, most definitely.
If I could tweak your comment really quick with that objection, again, talking about language and the impact that it has, I wouldn't necessarily agree with the statement about cutting our losses, so much as I would say perhaps, say data is showing that perhaps we're not achieving the goals that we've set, it would give us an opportunity to pivot to something else. You just want to make sure that we're not necessarily throwing everything out, you know, wholesale, that if there, I would assume in every implementation in a system like this, there are going to be challenges, and hopefully, we do see the results that we're looking for. If there is a highlight somewhere that is super effective, that we can, you know, in other areas that are not quite as effective, then we can pivot towards those areas that are much more effective, and tweak the program or the instruction. But to your point, Dr. Guzman, absolutely, if there is data that is showing us that we are just not seeing the results that we want, then we definitely need to pivot to something else, so that we're not continuing down the same road. But at the same time, as has been shared, you know, there is going to be that dip, and we want to shorten it as much as possible, so that we then have the buy-in from everybody, and we start to see the growth that we're expecting. Because the reality is, as has been shared by this team, as was shared by Dr. LaSalle during our board, our study session during our board retreat during the summer, when you have students that are lower achieving students, you have to have a much greater growth in order to close that achievement gap. Obviously, as was shown, you know, if we have growth year after year, that's great, but if we're only getting students in ninth grade levels by the time they're in 11th grade, or even seniors, it's not necessarily the best result. It is growth, mind you, and I understand that. But as we continue down this road, whether it's in math or any other subject, we also want to make sure that we're tweaking the implementation, that we're taking those best practices that we identify, and understand, too, that what we're providing here, what the staff or the faculty is providing here, that's the base. Anything that they can provide above and beyond that differentiated instruction, wonderful. If you identify some strategy that is working miracles at one campus, how do we implement them? Or are they even necessary to be implemented at another campus who's doing really well, but the other campus is, you know, growing leaps and bounds for whatever reason? So it's taking all that into account, and synthesizing everything, and then coming up with the appropriate approach. That was it, thank you, go ahead.
I want my last comment, President Breonis.
I just wanted to make a comment about the dip, because I think I don't want to create a misconception.
Go ahead.
A lot of the times, when Michael Fulen talks about the dip of change management, he really, it's really talking about the implementation of fidelity to what we already know are good practices. And so it just takes time to train everybody. And so when that, if we're doing something that, of course, is not, like, that's why the triangulation of data is important, right? You're going to have common assessments, and not just one test, that's one time a year. So I think what you're seeing right now is the creation of systems to make sure that we don't stay too long in anything that's not working. But that dip really means, like, if some school's doing academic discourse, and everybody checks off that they're doing it, but it's only the teacher talking to one student, and not everybody, not all students talking to each other, training to that is what we see as the dip. But it's more around the fidelity of best practices that we already know work in math and in other subjects, more than trying something and just seeing to see if it works. Because it cannot, it has to be very intentional, even if you design a dip.
And I'm glad you, and I do appreciate that, that you said, your final thought there, about being intentional, that it's not just a one-off, and that's, I think that's a comment that I had made previously in one of these sessions, was that oftentimes, we don't implement something in the long term, it's a flash in the pan, and we don't see the results right away, so we move on to the next thing. And unfortunately, that's something that we see a lot of times, particularly in K-12 education. Case in point, you have a new administration come in, they want to have their, you know, signature initiative, and so they implement their policies at the federal level that we now have to pivot and implement, and then that administration is gone, and another one comes in, and we're stuck holding the bag. Here, like you said, we want to be very intentional with the best practices, implementing them, and continuing to have that commitment or buy-in from our families, from our students, from our faculty, from the administration, and ultimately, the board as well. Thank you. Mr. Nguyen, you had a comment?
Yes. Now, the priority standard habit identifier, solidifier, and you'll be rolling out next school year. The only problem, what I see from the feedback from the teacher from Mountview and Salmonte School, because of block schedule, do you foresee any challenges or problem when you try to, because some of them express concern that they cannot fully implement it, because the timing, the instructional time on math. So how you address that kind of problem?
So I think that's what we're going to address during the summer week-long professional development. We're going to give our teachers the time to plan, and look at their pacing, and really see, how am I going to implement these priority standards within the scope of two semesters? So I think that's kind of a road that we're headed towards, and we're going to tackle that issue when we get there, and we start really getting our hands dirty, really working with the curriculum.
Have you heard anything feedback from the El Monte and Mountview School teacher?
During the priority standards, yeah, we had some very, you know, in-depth, tough conversations about, you know, how is this going to work at a block schedule versus a traditional?
Amazing, you know, when we first started, people attacking us, but now, you know, people coming together and work together, and that's good, that's a good sign.
It's a good thing, right?
Yeah, that's a good sign.
Yeah. Which brings us to that, right? Celebrate that, that people are being, greeting you with smiles instead of frowns, right? I did NWEA for five years at a different district, and, you know, I'll be honest with you, I wasn't necessarily a big fan of the platform myself either, I didn't understand it, I didn't really see the big vision or the big picture behind it, until I really went through my very first cycle. And really, what really made me a more committed teacher, more committed to this cycle of continuous improvement, is once I got my data in the winter and in the spring, I was really able to see the fruits of my labor. You know, I've worked so hard, I brought in all these teaching practices, I tried new teaching strategies, I tried implementing more games, more things, and I really got to see if it worked or not, right? And it wasn't like a gotcha moment or anything, like, it was just like, this year, you did awesome, you knocked it out of the park. this year you did awesome, you knocked it out of the park. This year it wasn't a great year for you. You did something that you didn't do the years prior. Let's reassess and let's readjust. And then it was kind of like that moment for me. And what was awesome too is that, you know, I was celebrated. You know, when I did awesome, my, my principal said, hey, Alex, you really did awesome. You know, you really knocked it out of the park this semester, you know, great job. Or sometimes I saw a fellow teacher like get spotlighted and not me, and that made me more motivated. I'm like, man, I want to get highlighted next. You know, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna try a lot harder. I didn't get spotlighted, you know, so it kind of worked in, in those two ways. So I think the, the celebration piece is really important, especially with our kids. You know, I, I want to say that, that most of our kids are probably not very motivated by grades. A letter grade is not really getting them super excited to really do their best. I mean, you have those students who like live by the grade and they want to get an A in every class, but I wouldn't say that's the majority of our students. A lot of our students get more out of that human connection, building community, right? A, a very good friend of mine, a, a teacher once told me, you know, nobody wants to learn from somebody they don't like, you know? You don't. So as a teacher, when you have these opportunities with the NWA to really celebrate a student who's just been struggling, but they show tremendous growth, like that's your way in to really building community with that student, making them feel comfortable, getting them motivated and getting them inspired to try harder and maybe give a little bit more effort that they weren't giving before. So I think that is the critical piece of NWEA is that community aspect, that connection with the students, that celebration, those affirmations that you give them, they really go a long way. And I think everybody in this room can speak that we like it when somebody says something nice to us, right? About the work that we're doing. It feels really good, right? And it feels just as good with our kids as well. So I think that's the, the, the thing that we really pushed when we're doing our data analysis in the winter. We had teachers send messages on parent square to all of their students who had high growth and who had high achievement. And I mean, you'd be surprised how many happy faces they got back from, from parents because they were, you know, probably not used to getting a lot of happy faces, you know, especially with math, right? And a lot of those high-growth students are the ones who are part of a lot of our low achieving. So it was a, it's, it's a very powerful move, you know, and it's also, we're trying to dispel a lot of that math trauma, you know, that our students come to our school with, you know, they've maybe have not had a lot of success in math, but now they are. Even if they still have an F in the class, they are growing and we're celebrating them and they get shocked, like why, why are you spotlighting me? Why, why am I getting a certificate? You know, as you might see with some of these kids here, right? Like they're, they're like even like, why am I in front of this camera taking a picture right now? Why am I being celebrated? Right? And, and that really does go a long way for, for students and they, they will appreciate that more than probably any letter grade that, that, that you can give them. So this is some examples of some of our schools and some of the work that they've been doing, where they've been spotlighting students in the classroom, giving them certificates. Arroyo has been doing daily announcements in their intercom, spotlighting those students who had a lot of growth. Mountain View spotlighting teachers, giving them swag, who had tremendous growth in their, in their classrooms. Same thing with their students. This is the kind of culture that we're really kind of working on bringing towards our district, a culture of a growth mindset, having students take ownership of their learning, having students getting celebrated for their hard work, and then also giving them a very direct plan on, on how you can improve your, your ritual. How can you get better at math using the, the iXL integration with NWEA? This is what's gonna help us increase the achievement in our district. And I think now that we've gone through a full, a full cycle, our students are starting to see it. Our teachers are starting to see it. Our parents are starting to see it, our leaders, and hopefully the board today is able to see where we're heading with this. So I want to say thank you so much for your, your time today and leave it open to any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Sanchez, Dr. Guinness and Dr. Science for presenting tonight. Really appreciate it. At this time, I'll open it up to my colleagues for any final thoughts. I'll start with Trustee Nguyen.
Okay. With the Math Academy, have you finalized what courses are offering at each school site, you know, like Rosemeat, Arroyo? Or, you know, Mountain View School, have you finalized, I know this is in the work, but you know, have you had any idea what courses are offering in Math, you know, Academy? Do you work with Mr. Yolanda Emerson? Yeah, define the courses that offering, the first, it's the first time it's offering. So I think as, as a board member, I want to see what offering at each school.
I know the courses being offered as I am one, two, three and pre-calc, but Dr. Rivas is the one that's working a lot more closely with Ms. Emerson. So I can't really speak to that yet.
Yeah. So, and I thank you so much. You know, this is the opportunity that, you know, I can air a lot of questions out, you know. You know that when it comes to math, I'm very passionate about it because, you know, you know, I, you and Dr. McGinnis went to California Math Council every year. To do what? To, to understand the dynamic, how it changed. So, you know, we learn a lot. So that's why, you know, we try the best we can to serve our kid. And thank you so much for, I know you, you're working very hard. I can see it. I can feel it, you know, under my skin. And I know it because the feedback from the teacher, feedback from all, from the parents, they highly pray the work that you've been doing. And, you know, make me happy that, you know, you're doing the great thing for our student. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And also just real quick, it's, it's, I mean, it takes a village, right? I wish Dr. Rivas was here because, I mean, she's been very instrumental in this work that we've been doing. And I feel very privileged and honored to be able to work with such amazing minds with Dr. McGinnis, Ms. Catalina Science. I mean, it's, it's been really easy to just kind of work through all, all these little things that we've mentioned in the presentation, like very seamlessly and we're all on the same page. And I mean, we have a really amazing team here.
Thank you. Trustee Padilla, and, and again, if I could remind members to keep your comments to under five minutes.
I'm sorry, I said, I just want to tell you that I give you all the kudos, all the spotlight and I celebrate you because it's been a lot of work to get to this point. It, it was a, it was, it was a battle that we haven't won the war, but it was a vicious battle in so many fronts. I always talk about my experience because I've been an educator for 32 years. I've been here for 11 years and it's important to talk about that. Gives you credibility. I don't just have a degree, I have many degrees, but I have 32 years to put behind that. You know, I've woken up every day to see little faces and to ensure that they get a quality education. And so when I talk about that, it's that credibility piece that I haven't been a, a board, a boss to a superintendent. I've been a boss to Nick Salerno. I've been a boss to Mary Willis. I've been a boss to Irela Perez, Dr. Irela Perez. I've been a boss to Dr. Edward Zuniga. I've worked under many assistant superintendents of educational services. Dr. Sergio Flores, Mr. Larry Cecil, Dr. Laura Rivas, and even before then another one. So I know that that department keeps the pulse of achievement and, and what happens in our school district. But I also want to give the spotlight and kudos and celebrate Dr. Zuniga because it's been with your leadership that we have been through thick and thin in this district. And math is a hot topic. I applaud you. Not only do we talk to our kids about using 21st century skills when we talk about collaboration, communication, critical thinking and creativity. We have put our money where our mouth is and we have put those resources into place so that our kids can achieve. And I applaud you for using 21st century skills. I want to thank our teachers for identifying the power standards, for making goals, for increasing the use of iXL, because if you remember, they didn't like iXL. I've been here through that. Thank you for the PD that they've attended. Thank you for training our parents. Thank you for empowering our parents to make them make a goal and to explain to them about what NWEA is and how they need to pay attention and what questions they need to ask their teachers to hold them accountable. Thank you to the teachers for working with the consultant, with the TOSA, for the continuous discussions of, of math and keeping CALs to talk about math, because we would always talk about, but they would always talk about a bunch of different stuff. The focus is on math throughout the El Monte area. And again, it took the high school and Dr. Rivas to control that and then bring everybody along for the ride and everybody has responded well. So I give you all the credit. This is your moment. I, I, I am so glad that our district went with the decision to hire you, Mr. Alejandro Sanchez Barajas. You have done, you know, we, we've had some kids that had more than a year's growth. You have more than a year's growth in the job that you've been in. We can see that. And to, lastly, to Mr. Qui, kudos. I give you the spotlight and I celebrate you also for doing all that work and doing things that people have never done before, like going to neighboring school districts and talking and leaning into that discomfort. Because if you had not done that, I don't know, I don't know if all this would have come together with their work. I think, like you say, it takes a village. And yeah, sometimes you need to do untraditional things or do uncomfortable things to, to, to get the change. Main message for me is we will stick with it. And yes, I was critical of South Del Monte, but let's stick with it. Let's have more adjustments. Let's have more discussions. And I know all about, you know, not getting what you want. Right now for month six in attendance, there's 15 schools in the neighboring school district where I work, okay? Two of my schools are in 14th and 13th and 14th place and there's 15 schools. So I'm like, what do I need to do? I need to adjust something because I'm supposed to be like the expert in attendance and it didn't go well for month six. So what are we going to do to make some adjustments? So thank you for fully implementing, making A-plus adjustments to history, the El Monte Union High School District's Math Initiative. Again, this is my proudest moment, Dr. Zuniga, as a, as a school board member in my 11 years. This is my proudest moment. Thank you, Board President Briana.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Trustee, Dr. Galavies.
I just want to say great job. It was very informative. I think we're doing really good work. It actually reminds me a lot of the presentation that a Royal High School gave too, like the work that's happening, which I think is a true success for the district as a whole. The fact that like the English department at a Royal High School is doing something very similar to what you guys spoke about here means that we're taking these practices, these strategies, looking at assessments, creating common informative assessments, and we're doing this district-wide, not just in one area, but in all areas, like it speaks to what we're doing in this district. And I think that's really great work. So kudos to all of you for getting up here and talking to us for this long and having to answer our millions of questions because that's never fun. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Trustee, Dr. Guzman.
No, I just want to echo Dr. Galavies' sentiment that it was very informative. I really appreciate the thoroughness of the, the presentation, but also the clarity which, which it was presented because yes, it's being presented to us as a board. But it's also for the parents out there, the community that's listening. And so that's one of the things that I've impressed on Dr. Zuniga to ensure that, yes, these are for the board of these presentations, but at the same time, we want to make them as community-friendly as possible. So thank you for, for doing both the thoroughness and the clarity of the presentation. One, one thing that I do want to reiterate, and I think it goes back to a comment that Mr. Qui and Dr. Galavies mentioned, and I mentioned it very briefly about the need to ensure that all students, regardless of race, ethnicity, gender. And my comment on data desegregation is to really understand, are there other factors outside of demographics or the core demographics that may be impacting, right? Socioeconomic factors being primarily what comes to mind. So I think really, I, I heard, it was very encouraging to hear how you're really focusing on all students, the success and not painting any one group or stereotyping them into as a model minority or anything like that. But you're really focusing on being student and, and teacher and school-centered. And so I really want to applaud for you for that. And just to reiterate that the importance of being student, teacher and school-centered. So thank you again for your presentation to all three of you. And Dr. Rivas is absent. You were phenomenal. So I do appreciate the three of you stepping up today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Guzman. I don't have anything else to, to add other than what I've already shared during the presentation and other than echoing my colleagues' sentiments tonight. Thank you again for being here. As Dr. Galavies said, you know, standing up for two and a half hours and presenting to, to the board may not be the most fun. Definitely not the most fun way to spend your Wednesday evening, but I do appreciate it. I'm sure my colleagues will agree as well. The data you presented paints a promising picture and I, I look forward to, to receiving regular updates and really seeing that growth continue and, you know, continuing to work with our partner districts. And again, sharing in their success because their success is our success. So thank, so Dr. Dr. Zuniga, do you have any final thoughts?
Do you want to, as a board member as well?
Any final thoughts, Trustee Pablo?
Yes, it was, it was a lot of information to take in, a lot of discomforting information, but at the same time, like they've been, like, the rest of the board has been saying it's, it's nice to know that there is being something done. And it does remind me a lot of the Arroyo's presentation from a month ago or two months ago and, and how they're also doing something similar for, for English. So just that, that I, I, I think that a lot of this information was, like I said, like very discomforting to hear and just see, like it, it was a bit sad. Like I, I, I'm gonna admit, like I wanted to cry at some point looking at that. But I'm, I'm glad to know that the district as a whole is moving forward together. That's, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to close that it took me three semesters to pass statistics in college. But it took a good teacher to get me to the statistics and graduate my bachelor's honestly. And again, just think about the kids that struggle with math every day and they're afraid, they're afraid of failing. They're discouraged easily just by not being a natural mover in numbers, right? So I have full confidence in all three of you and the team, the school leaders that are there and working together. So just the grind continues, but the fruits of our labor will come. So thank you. My gratitude for all of you for your time here this evening. And you did a wonderful job in presenting this information to the board tonight. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Dr. Zuniga, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Board President. Thank you, Cabinet. Thank you so much.
You're welcome to stay. You're not required to. But thank you for being here for the last three hours.
Thank you, guys.
Good night. All right. Thank you. Okay. So we're moving on, on our agenda. After that very thorough presentation, we're moving on to consent. We only have one item tonight. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
So it's moved by Trustee Dr. Galavies. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Trustee Dr. Guzman. Any discussion? This is the second reading on our board policies, 4000 series. There are no questions, then the item has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? See none. Consent agenda is approved. Moving right along to our regular agenda, item number one, 2025 California School Boards Association or CSBA Delegate Assembly Election Region, Subregion 23B. So for this item, there are, actually I'll turn it over to Dr. Zuniga since I am a candidate for this item.
Yeah, thank you, Board President. Obviously, it's self-explanatory. There are three candidates for the 25 CSBA Delegate Assembly. This is for subregion 23B. What we would like the board to consider is to vote for two. And then once the board approves this candidate's election, then the ballot will be signed and also will be mailed out prior to March 17th. So the candidates include our very own Florence Fabriones from the El Monte Union High School District. We have Adam Carranza, our neighboring partner school district, Mount View School District, and Jeffrey De La Torre from Hacienda La Puente Unified School District too. And I believe everybody has the experience in serving in the assembly. Not sure if Jeffrey is, but I know that.
Not sure if Jeffrey is, but I know that Mr. Carranza and, and President Briones have as well.
Thank you. So at this time, there's two spots open and three candidates. Is there a motion for anybody to vote for two of the three individuals?
I try to make a motion, Mr. Briones and Mr. Carranza.
Okay, nominee or motion to vote for myself and Mr. Carranza from Mount View School District by trustee Nguyen. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Seconded by trustee Dr. Guzman. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Padilla.
What do you do?
So the, the, the question is, what do the delegates do? So the delegate assembly is made up of approximately three hundred delegates from throughout the state in different regions. Here in our area, we have region twenty-three, which is broken up into three subregions, A, B, and C. Our subregion is twenty-three B. We're made up of Almani Union, Almani City, Mount View School District, Rosebein School District, Hacienda La Puente Unified School District, Montebello Unified School District, Roland Unified School District, and Walnut Valley Unified School District. So the delegates are elected by their, the region or subregions, and we are, we are, excuse me. The delegate assembly is the governing body for the California School Boards Association, although they do have an executive director and an executive board made up of the immediate past president, president, president-elect, vice president, and secretary, and then there are regional directors. The governing body gives direction, or the delegate assembly as a governing body gives direction. We also update our policy pillars on a regular basis, essentially every year, and we also update the, the association's governing document, which is their bylaws, I believe, on a decennial basis, which is actually coming up this, this year if I'm not mistaken. So we give direction for the body, just like there's a governing body here for the school district, except here, there's three hundred of us, and so we all come together, we represent school districts from throughout California, from rural school districts to suburban school districts like our own, to urban school districts in large cities, and so we're effectively the, the governing body for CSBA.
Give direction to who? To our?
To the exec, to the executive body at CSBA. So it's the regional directors and.
So then the executive body does what that, what, what do they do with the recommendation that our body, that you give them? What do they do with that?
They implement that directive. So if we have a discussion on, say, for example, apportionment for representation on delegate assembly, the delegate assembly itself will have discussions and give direction as to how many members should be in that body, and then the executive board then approves or doesn't.
So how does this help the Almani Union?
Can you give me an example of, you know, we nominate you, and I have no problem with you being on there, because I know you love to do this, and it's something that you enjoy, but how does that make Almani Union High School District stronger, or how does, what does this do for our children and our community?
So a really, a really good example would be when we visit Washington DC for coast-to-coast. Most of us that attend that are, are delegates, so we bring that experience to, to the visit. As you know, in, in the last couple of years, our delegation has selected me to lead our delegation with our members, and so as a delegate, I'm meeting regularly with our own representatives here in area twenty-three B, but I'm also meeting twice a year, biannually, with the entire association delegate assembly. And so when we, when we get together, we have policy pillars that we are assigned to. So for example, if we've taken a position on something here at Almani Union, hot topic would be immigration right now, that becomes part of our conversation at delegate assembly. So we talk about what, what is our focus? What should our focus be in this policy pillar about, say, local governance, which is the area that I was on at the December meeting? So for me, it's like, well, we should ensure that we take positions that ensure that there's local control by governing bodies, you know, and not these mandates coming down from the state or the federal government, especially any unfunded mandates. As we know, oftentimes legislature will pass a law that requires us to do something, but there's no funding attached to it, and we have to absorb the cost. So long answer to your question is, our beliefs here, our, our ideas, those go to, to me through, or through me, to the delegate assembly, that information goes back, and we have those, those conversations.
So representatives that, that are, that are, to become delegates of the assembly, do their districts attend CSBA? Their districts attend this conference?
Yes.
Okay, so then if you guys are delegates and you're going to be representing us, you would support the CSBA conference and want your members to go, right?
And attend the conference?
And attend the conference?
Yeah, as far as I'm aware, for the three candidates that are on here, all three school districts attend AEC every year.
CSBA?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, yeah, great, yeah. Thank you, no further questions.
Thank you. Any other discussion? No? Okay, so the item has been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, all is in favor of voting for myself and Mr. Carranza from the Mount View School District, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? See none? Motion carries.
Mr. Briones, is there like a list of when you're going to be having meetings so that we know, like, when to ask you stuff or what the topic is going to be? Like, is there like a, a laid-out calendar of like, these are the seven meetings you're going to have, or the one meeting? Is there a calendar for that?
Our, our meetings as a delegate assembly are twice a year in May.
Okay.
And then again at the annual conference.
Okay. Can, can we have those dates on the Friday, just as a reminder?
I think it's in the, the assembly election document.
Okay.
It did, I think it does indicate in here when those meetings take place.
Okay, all right.
And there is a list of the current delegates, and I do want to point, point out one thing. Because of declining enrollment, I know we've already voted, but very quickly, because of declining enrollment, we have lost seats in our, in our subregion, in our region in twenty-three, as of, in here in the document, as of twenty twenty-five, sub-region twenty-three C has lost one elected seat. So there's one less voice.
Which districts were those?
Twenty-three C is, I don't have the full list of districts, but essentially the, I think it was trustee Christine.
Lucero?
Lucero, thank you, from Baldwin Park. Essentially, they, they, CSBA has eliminated that seat since she lost her reelection because of the change in apportionment. Essentially, they're not going to refill that seat.
Got it.
And Ms. Lucero was very involved in delegate assembly.
And in a time that we need that, that's critical.
So thank you, colleagues, for your, your vote of confidence and your support on that item. So that concludes our regular agenda. Moving on to roundtable and closure of meeting. Item number one, topics or issues to be brought forward for future agenda items. As a reminder, this is not an opportunity to engage in detailed or prolonged discussion, simply to make requests for future agenda items or for reports. Start with trustee Nguyen.
I would like, you know, like I say, Dr. Rivas is not here today due to her family situation, so I would like her, her to keep the board updated on the class that offering from each school site, in force, you know, Math Academy, that's it.
Just an update on the Math Academy?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything, anything else, trustee Nguyen?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Trustee Padilla?
Yeah, Dr. Zuniga, I have a question. When we do the, when we get our information from the dashboard, right? And we get that information, how do we get it? Is it desegregated or is it as a whole?
It's as a whole, but then it breaks it down, English Language Art, English Language Learners, for example, they provide specific data on ELLs. They do have subgroups as well, if they're predominantly a majority subgroup, like Hispanic population.
What's the priority? What is a significant subgroup in this district?
You have Hispanic, obviously, that's a significant subgroup. You have socio-economically disadvantaged students, that's another significant subgroup. You have the ELL population, that's another significant.
So do we get that from the state?
Yeah, it's on the dashboard.
So why do they desegregate it?
They do desegregate it if you, if you continue to go on to more of the desegregation of the data. The initial dashboard shows you the overall performance of students in the school district, and then it breaks it down by subgroups if you go deeper.
Got it. So in this district, what are some significant groups that the state has told us, pay attention to the subgroup, because it is a significant subgroup? What do we have to pay attention to in this district?
Well, those are the significant subgroups that I mentioned. Obviously, you have the socio-economic disadvantaged students, our ELL population of students as well, and obviously, our Hispanic is our largest subgroup, right? So it is a subgroup because it's the amount of students that we have. Asian population is twenty-five percent, so that would be the, the two ethnic subgroups that we focus on.
So the state tells us that we have to look at those groups because they're significant?
Not specifically, they just, they just say, these are the ones that will be accounted for as far as the data that's released, that provide you those significant subgroups. But when you talk about the accountability, for example, in ALCAP plan, that's to serve our, our students with, students of socio-economic disadvantaged, our ELL population, and now also our special education students are also included as far as the ALCAP plan.
Right, so it's not just all students, it's those specific subgroups that are significant to your district.
Especially under the ALCAP plan for SNC support.
Got it. No further questions, just one last item. When we get our attendance data, I know we've been getting the percentages from the reports we submit to the state on our, our percentages and so on and so forth, but I haven't really been seeing the, the loss of ADA. And that, to me, is critical, particularly with declining enrollment and so on and so forth, and I know that we kind of bring it and then we get away from it, and so can we just be a little more regular about that?
Sure, we'll do. I'll make an note of it so we can remind our.
ADA loss per school and per district, it's critical, because, you know, a one percent increase is a million dollars in this district, and so the money is important in order for us to buy program for our students, so no further requests. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Trustee, Dr. Galavies.
I don't have any requests, but Mr. Padilla, there's a dashboard application that you can put on your cellphone, and you can look everything up. I have the app on my phone, and it's really cool, so you can look up like every.
I'm actually pretty familiar with it. I just wanted to make a point that the state tells us how they're going to desegregate the data, so I, I've been around for thirty-two years, so I know all about the app.
Oh, I just wanted to give you that tip.
What's the dashboard? The app? Okay.
Called the California Dashboard, and it's an application that you can put on your phone, and you can look at all the data at any time you want.
Yeah, I know all about it. I've been in, in education for thirty-two years. I don't need a rookie board member to tell me that.
Mr. Padilla, I don't think your comments are necessary.
He's kind of saying, implying that, so I'm firing back that, I know that.
I don't think that would.
I wanted to make a point that the state gives us the data desegregated and that's specific.
And I don't think your comments are germane to the conversation, so thank you. Dr. Guzman?
I have no further comments about or any requests. I do request you, President Briones, that we review the expectations of professionalism for the board if we are to do the community's work at our next meeting. That's my request, at least for you, if that would be something that you can do.
Thank you, and that kind of ties into what I'll bring up tonight. Dr. Zuniga, do you have any items?
No items tonight.
Thank you. So my items tonight, based on our discussion at our governance session last week, I would like to gauge interest from the board if there are any members that are interested in participating in a bylaws, board bylaws committee, either an ad hoc or standing committee, to update our board bylaws and to inform the development of a governance handbook from staff and legal counsel. So just, if anyone, if anyone is interested, so I can bring this up at the next meeting to officially put together the committee.
You want us to tell you now?
The president's just throwing it out there, you can talk about it in substance at the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, you can, if you're interested, let me know, and then for the next meeting, we'll just put it together. Okay? And to your point, Mr. Guzman or Dr. Guzman, yes, absolutely, and we did have this discussion last week about our expectations and our protocol, and I do want to highlight that we need to be mindful of our, of our words, our responses to individuals' comments or inquiries. Definitely need to be mindful of the impact of our language, and, you know, I will make this comment directly to, to, to Mr. Padilla, I do want to make clear that I expect all members to behave in a professional manner, and if an individual makes a suggestive comment about something available, that's fine, leave it at that. I don't think the intent is to try to school anybody or to show anyone up. I understand that you have a very long storied career in education here, that's great. It's not necessary to respond to, to comments, it's not necessary to feel threatened or to feel, you know, intimidated in any, in any way. You know, let's maintain a certain level of decorum and professionalism. That's, that's the expectation of everybody on this board, and, you know, if necessary, I will ask to, to meet with you and confer with you separately, along with legal counsel, to address any concerns that you may have, but also to address concerns that I have about your own, your own behavior at board meetings. So with that, legal counsel, if you could report out from closed session.
Mr. President and the board, please apologize my not being here to read you into closed session. I appreciate your patience and tolerance. The items that were heard in closed session tonight are under section A two of the published agenda, sub-items A, B, I'm sorry, sub-items A and B, the board heard information, no final action was taken, and that concludes the readout from closed session.
Thank you. So the board will not reconvene into closed session after reporting out. At this time, if there's no objection, it's nine oh one PM, and our meeting is adjourned.